We're going to call this meeting to order. Marnie, would you please call the roll, please?
Councilmember Mark Gregg.
Here.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen. Councilmember Henry Rosenthal.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Here.
And Mayor Buddy Pender.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Marnie. I've asked Coach Russell if he would say that lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
.......................................
You did it right.
Thank you. And I've asked Pastor Tony Hammond to come and lead us in prayer, please. Thank you, Pastor Hammond.
You're welcome. Well, let's begin tonight with prayer. Father, we thank you so much for this evening, and we pray your blessing over this meeting and all that's done, all the decisions that are made, just be with us, give us wisdom and understanding. May we just live this out in this community according to your perfect will. In your precious name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. All right, council. Any requests for deletions or emergency additions?
I do. A few meetings ago, some items on the list were repeated, and we had public comment, and explained to the people here and the people listening in that have a better understanding of what those items were. We groan to the fact that we don't do that anymore. Now, I would like to advise just to reconsider. It doesn't have to be done tonight, but reconsider. These items are called out, and Greg was the one that started it, and Mr. Yates continued on, but just for a short time. And now we're right back to where we were a couple of years ago. So I would just like to have the items called out, especially the items under Consent Agenda. Thank you. So that's my thoughts. I'd like you to think about it, and let's do it again. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. I would like to add that we bring up something, whether we put it on, I talked to John about it today, about the properties when the village first came into existence that were zone changed, downzoned, actually. So I think there's some other interests on council as well. And so I talked to you about, we either can discuss it, or we put it on January's agenda.
Yeah, I'd suggest January, and then that can be put on the January agenda.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so next, we will...
There's some...
What's that?
There was one item that staff had a suggestion to move, which is Tab 12, the hurricane evacuation baseline modeling. There's a lot... That discussion was going to relate to, or is going to relate to county, what the county is doing. They are meeting tomorrow, so staff is recommending that we move that to the end of the agenda. If we get to it tonight, if we finish tonight, we'll finish before the county, but this way, if we don't finish tonight, that will allow that item to be considered after the county has made their decision as to what they're recommending on the hurricane evacuation.
John, since you're bringing that up and staff brought it up, can we ask the council if we'd rather just do this on Thursday instead of, let's wait and hear what the county has to say?
Yeah, I mean, my recommendation would be to do it Thursday if we're going to be meeting Thursday. So I just said, I mean, given the size of the agenda, I assume we will. But I just said we'll move it to the end, but the recommendation of staff is to consider that on Thursday, assuming we're here.
Is everybody okay with that? Yeah? Okay, all right. Okay, with nothing else, no other additions, no other deletions? Okay, all right. So I guess we'll move on to the mayor's thing, so request a motion for the mayor's election?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a nomination, please. I would like to nominate Mayor Buddy Pender to be the mayor again next year.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Mark Gregg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen.
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal.
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pender.
Yes.
That passes five to zero.
Okay. I would like to nominate Sharon Mahoney as vice mayor.
I'll second.
Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Buddy Pender.
Yes.
Councilmember Mark Gregg.
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen. Councilmember Henry Rosenthal. And Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Yes.
That motion passes five to zero.
Okay, so now we're on to B, the reports. We have the wastewater audit by Markham.
The Markham folks are attending via Zoom. They're going to present their... As many of you received, it's also in the agenda packet, their report. They're going to present their report tonight. So I will turn it over to them once they get brought up on Zoom.
Good afternoon. Can you hear us?
We can hear you, yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Good afternoon, and thank you for allowing us to be here today. My name is Moises Ariza. I'm with the firm of Markham LOP, and my colleague, Robert Burden, is here with me today as well. For the record, we're located at 1 Southeast Third Avenue, Suite 1100, Miami, Florida, 33131. And we were engaged to perform a review and analysis of RFP 18-02, the continuing service agreement with Page Excavating, Inc. as of November 19th, 2023. Prior to today's meeting, we shared with you our final report, and the purpose of today's presentation is to give you a review and summary of the results of our analysis. I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Robert, which will start off with the earlier part of the summary, and I'll chime in regarding specific items of our report. Robert?
Thank you, Moises. Yes, our scope in the report that we provided to you included review of the RFP, the bid process and bid documents, the invoicing and billing of Page and engineering, or excavation, excuse me, and then ultimately, we reviewed the work that was performed, selected work for visual inspection and tested and reviewed the work completed to confirm that it was completing in accordance with the invoicing and billing by Page. So our procedures basically included review of the award process. We noted that there were four contractors that had responded to the request for proposals, and ultimately, it was Page Excavating that performed the work that we're reviewing. They were the bidder that provided the bid response that was specific to the repairs and the nature of the work that we were reviewing here. We were requested by the village to specifically pay focus to the vacuum pit rings and valve repairs for visual inspection and testing, although we reviewed all of the work performed by Page from the period October 2018 through May 30th of 2023. And in our process, we selected 25 ring repairs and 25 valve repairs from a population of approximately 2,300 ring repairs and approximately 450 valve repairs. And for the 25 ring and 25 valve repairs that we selected, we were able to confirm on site that all of those repairs had been completed. We found no exceptions in the process of confirming those valve and ring repairs. The only observations that we had of note with regard to the work completed was that there was a little bit of difficulty for some of the repair work, being that it is located underground and some look... All of the work was identified by street address. There was still some difficulty with a few of the selected repairs finding the specific location. And in talks with the village, we understand now that going forward, they're using a more specific geographical locating through GPS coordinates that will make it easier to track repairs going forward, although again, we were able to confirm all the repairs that we had randomly selected for testing. The only other item of note with regard to the repair work related to the ring repair work, these are the rings that encircle the manhole covers. We noted in our selection process that there were several locations where repairs had been performed multiple times, sometimes within a short period of time where a ring had been replaced. And so we selected and reviewed some of those rings that were frequently repaired as part of our testing process, and we noted that a couple of factors gave rise to the repeated ring repairs. One was that the locations themselves were in more busy thoroughfares, where sometimes the repair work would be run over prior to concrete having time to sufficiently harden. That was addressed more recently with added improved rebar structures being implemented into the ring installations according to our discussions with the wastewater management. And that was the main observations with regard to the repairs themselves in terms of geolocating, and then in terms of the question regarding why there would be repeated work performed at a single location. Some of that was due to the nature of the locations being in busy intersections or places where they were more likely to be run over by a vehicle prior to having sufficient time for the concrete that was newly placed to harden. Other than that, we were able to fully reconcile all the payments to the invoices presented by Page for the work completed. And separate from that, in addition to that, we reviewed the grant application process as it related to the award or of grant dollars and included work performed by Page. And Moises will speak with regard to the findings on the grant review.
Thank you, Robert. Much appreciated. So I, outside of the procedures that Robert shared with you just now, I focused significantly on reviewing the activity related to the granting agency. What is this? So to give you a little bit backstory, yes, you contracted with this vendor to do specific repairs throughout the village. That being said, you use federal dollars or a federal grant funding to cover some of the expenditures or expenses to be paid to that vendor. That being said, when you're using federal dollars to procure and to cover a certain contract, you must adhere to federal law. And the federal law brings about not only ensuring that there's competitive bidding, but other documentation that is of a higher regard or higher criteria than those of the policies, procedures, and protocols that the village has in place. One of the requirements under federal law is that when you are procuring services through a vendor and you're using federal dollars to pay invoices submitted by that vendor is, you must have a written formal agreement. And yes, the vendor was procured and was engaged by the village through the process in place at that point in time, but the vendor commenced performing services, and payments were made to that vendor prior to having a fully executed contract. So there was a time delay between the individual being contracted, the individual receiving payment from the village, and having an executed contract between both parties. So we bring this to your attention as part of Page 9 and 10 of the report, because yes, the federal government did not identify that as noncompliance. Maybe they didn't test it, maybe it was not part of their review or monitoring process, but it is a requirement under federal law to have a formal agreement with a vendor when using federal dollars. That is not only important to have that formal agreement, not just to follow and adhere to federal law, but it also makes reference as a point of reference when your finance department is approving payment or approving payment against those purchase orders, to have a formal agreement that they could use as a blueprint to make sure that the unitary cost is correct and that the scope of services that are being rendered by this vendor are correct. Yes, once we did the detailed testing, we did not find an issue with the cost that he was charging the village or the services he was performing for the village, but again, it happened after the fact. And as such, in our report, we believe that there should be a review of the procurement policies specifically related when you're using federal grant funds or state grant funds to ensure that you adhere to the federal law and state law. Again, thankfully, nothing that came to the... To say that an invoice was paid not in accordance with the agreement, but the agreement was executed after the fact, and that's what we're trying to avoid going forward. So we make note of that recommendation within our report. Robert?
Yeah, other than the noted exception with regard to the timing of the in... Some of the invoiced work that was determined based upon the review of the supporting grant documentation, there were no other material exceptions noted with regard to either completion of construction or any billing issues with regard to payment in excess of billing or any discrepancies on the invoices we noted. So with regard to the work that was completed in the... Under the continuing services agreement and the ongoing executed work authorizations, there were four of them. We were able to reconcile all the invoices that were provided to the ledger activity and billing shown by the city. So that would... Other than the grant discussion and the work that was commenced or prior to the executed contract agreement, that would be the whole of our findings related to our scope here. And then we have, of course, if you have any questions specific to anything we've presented or need any clarification on the report, we're here to offer that now.
Do you have any questions for him, or council? We have any questions for him? Mark, Henry?
Nope.
Okay, I... If there's no questions...
I don't know if you want me to address the exception that was identified and explain in better context how that arose. Basically, we're talking back in 2018.
Go ahead. Do the same thing that you told us when we got briefed, if you... The whole thing. A little bit about Seth in 2018.
So it was in 2018. That was when the village council agreed to bring wastewater in-house. Previously, you know, we had a DBO contract with Reynolds Water Island Marada, and they subcontracted to Severn Trent to do our operations and maintenance once the system was substantially completed. For whatever reason, I think it was... The hope was that it would be a cost-saving measure. The village council at the time, at the recommendation of the then-village manager Seth Lawless, agreed to go ahead and terminate the agreement with Severn Trent and Reynolds Water Island Marada and bring the wastewater operations and maintenance activities in-house. So what happened was the village first hired the techs that were working for Severn Trent and hired them as our full-time staff. But one of the things that was kind of lost without having Severn Trent, which has, you know, considerable resources and facilities throughout the country, was that there would be certain aspects that couldn't be done in-house because we were able to hire that staff, but then they didn't have all the equipment and things like that. So what happened was, based on the needs of the system, Seth started allotting work to Page Excavating. And the problem at the time was that we didn't have an agreement in place with Page. Those services weren't engaged through an RFP process. It was basically dire need at the time. Seth's interpretation of our purchasing ordinance was that as manager, he had the authority to grant work authorizations under $25,000 per job. He did not read our purchasing ordinance as saying that it's... If anything is $25,000 or more to a single vendor in a single year, then it requires village council approval. And then $25,000 a year is also our threshold, or $25,000 is also our threshold for when things should go out to bid. So it took some time for me to convince Seth that we needed to do this, go out to bid, and then that's why we ultimately did put out the bid in 2018 and then did receive four responses, but only really engaged Page because two of the proposals didn't provide the services that were needed regularly, and then one of the proposers opted not to enter into an agreement. So that's that background. And then as far as the geolocating of our infrastructure that is in process, AJ brought to council a proposal, and council agreed to implement an application called Cartograph, and that'll be where we're able to locate infrastructure with GPS coordinates. As you can imagine, that's a pretty daunting task because we have to utilize the as-built drawings and identify, you know, each vacuum pit and each grinder pump and things like that. So that is in process to address the other concerns in the audit report.
Thank you, Maria. Does council have any other questions for Maria or Markham? Thank you all for your presentation. And I guess if we need anything, we'll be reaching out to you, or our staff would be.
Perfect. Well, thank you for giving us the opportunity. I just want to mention and express our gratitude to everybody at the village that helped us. This was going back many, many years. So from the finance department that Maria leads, from the engineering department, we're going back many, many years in history. So I appreciate the effort and collaboration that they shared with us to get us all the documentation, going back to the grant documents, and then also being accommodating to the timeline when we did a visit. We were there on-site, walking the streets and walking the... Making our rounds to do that inspection and that physical inspection of the work that was done. So I want to thank you for being so accommodating to our requests. Everybody at the village prioritized us and prioritized our request to make sure that we were able to complete our report in a timely manner. So again, thank you for that. And if any questions arise after today's presentations, we make ourselves available to have a further dialogue in the near future. So thank you.
Okay, and thank you all. You guys did pick one of the hottest days to come down here, right, John? It was pretty hot. Anyways, hey, Councilman Rosenthal has a question.
Yes, sir.
Your process, I'm a little confused. Who did you audit in reference to persons' names?
So we audited the process. Our report and scope of services covers different things. It covers the procuring of vendor services for Page Excavating, Inc. It audits as well subsequent to that procurement process to ensure that the work was performed as expected or that scope of services by physical inspection.
as expected, or that scope of services by physical inspection. And then we sampled the population of invoices to ensure that the unitary costs, or the costs that they're being charged to the village for their services, agreed to what was procured and what was agreed between the vendor and the village through the agreement. So it covers different aspects of the entire process. It's just not focused on physical inspection, it's just not focused on detailed testing and invoice. It also goes into detail what funds, what dollars were used to pay this vendor, and did the village adhere to the policies and procedures that it must adhere to when using federal dollars.
Did you order, did you audit any persons of the staff? And Maria, I'm not looking at you when I say that, but the hat, did you include any persons of the staff?
Meaning, did we audit a particular position or director in, in, in regards to that? No, we were looking at the entire process of procuring services with an external vendor to ensuring internal controls were followed, to ensure that the vendor performed the scope of services, and to ensure that the village paid based on the unitary cost that it had agreed with this vendor. In regards to auditing a specific job performance by an employee of the village, that was not part of the scope.
Thank you.
If I understand the question correctly.
Thank you.
John, would you, do you want to chime in on anything there? I mean, you were the caregiver of that, I mean, right, overseer?
Yeah, I mean, it was an audit of the entire village process. Obviously, there's many staff members and positions that, that come into play as part of that. So it wasn't focused on any one individual or one individual position, but the, the entire process from, from soup to nuts, from, from beginning until where we are now. So I mean, I would say, you know, there, there obviously, there's individuals that are components of that, and, and we look at the work that was done, or not, we, the, the auditors looked at the work that was done, but it didn't, it didn't hone in on any, one individual, one or two individuals only.
Okay. Counsel, anybody have any other questions? Thank you, thank you, guys.
It is our pleasure. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so we will move on now to C, which is the high school baseball field. And before I do that, Rich, you, you guys can get ready, but counsel, we already, they came up and talked to us about the mosquito control. Are we okay moving them next to, right before public comment? Are we okay with that? Okay, are we okay with that? The mosquito control, they're gonna come up, that's not gonna take that long, okay?
That would be tab, tab 21.
21, yep, okay. And then we'll do public comment.
Yep, and just as a reminder to council, tab 21 is an action item, so we will have public comments specific to that item, and then we'll go into general public comment afterwards.
Okay, all right. Okay, the baseball field. Who's speaking first?
I was gonna do a little introduction.
Oh, you do, okay, go ahead. Let's see, Maria, am I getting ahead of myself here? Yep, okay, go ahead.
So starting in December of 2021, so we're talking three, two years ago, Mr. Patrick LaFier, Executive Director of Operations and Planning for the Monroe County School District, reached out to former village manager Greg Oravec by email to request a meeting of school board staff and village staff to start discussing, you know, their interest and desire to make improvements at the ball field utilized by Coral Shores High School. With everything going on, I think at that time in, in Greg's life, he didn't respond to the email. So then by March of 2022, I was acting manager, and Mr. LaFier reached out again. And then by, I think in the middle of March, we had a meeting, Maria Bajiati and I, with school district staff, Mr. LaFier, and, you know, discussed preliminarily this idea. And our agreement was just that when they got further along in the process, and especially when they got to the point of issuing an RFP for anything related to this project, that they would come back to the village and, you know, start working with us. In the meantime, though, Ted Yates started October 1 of 2022, and then, you know, with that change in administration, the school board started working with Ted, and Ted opted to go ahead and appoint our Public Works and Wastewater Director AJ Engelmeier to work directly with the school board. He's, he's an athlete himself, he's a coach, he's, you know, involved. So he was, besides his regular role at the village, he was also probably the best person on staff to, to do that kind of coordination. So AJ had a number of meetings, they had a committee, an evaluation committee, and then ultimately AJ participated as they did move through their RFQ process to find a design-build contractor for the project. There, at this point, there is no design, otherwise we would have something to show you. You know, this is a normal process. First, you get a contractor to do the design, the build, and then, as I explained with wastewater, we needed someone to do operations, so sometimes you'll have a, a DBO contractor. So now we're at a point where, you know, especially with some of the public interest that Mr. LaFier requested to come and make a presentation and kind of explain, you know, their side of things. The other aspect is separately, John is working with the school board attorneys to get all the related inter-local agreements straightened out, and any lease agreements and things like that. So those will be worked on at the same time. So I'll go ahead and introduce Mr. LaFier.
Good, good evening. Thanks mostly for allowing us the opportunity to, to come forward and speak to you all. There's been lots of, lots of discussion out in the community, which is understandable. We, we have that with a lot of our projects that we do, and we want to make sure we are as transparent as possible. So I wanted to come up here and, and, and speak to you all directly. I think the, since the, the inception of the village, the school, the school board and the village council have had a fantastic, fantastic relationship. We've got a couple of properties that, that we kind of share and, and use together and, and have agreements in, in place for those properties. And I don't see why we can't continue to, to, to work together on this particular project. As Maria so eloquently and detailedly summarized there, this process has been going on for a couple of years. I brought Mr. Holly with me to kind of represent the athletic department, because that's where it started. I work for the district, I'm the executive director of operations down in, in Key West, and based on that position, I, project management comes under me. So that's kind of why I'm up here representing the district side of things. But this, this request started at the baseball program level, the Coral Shores High School baseball program level. That's why we've got Principal Leatart here as well. This is, this is a request from the students and the coaches at Coral Shores for us to make some improvements at the Founders Park field. This is not a Monroe County School District staff request, it's a Coral Shores baseball program request. And I wanted to make sure that was clear, because that doesn't get discussed too much. With regard to the, the project and where we stand, Maria hit it on the head, we haven't even started yet. We've got a contract that still needs to be executed by the, the village manager, whoever that is at the time we decide, you decide to move forward, if, if you do. We don't go anywhere until that happens, and that's kind of why I'm here in front of you. So with regard to all the, all of what you're hearing about the design and what's gonna get done, we don't know anything about that yet, other than the basic scope of work, which was part of the request for qualifications that went out. And I think it was in some of the, the documentation that the, the council received. It's essentially, we want to resurface the, and this is, again, this is what the baseball program wants. They want to resurface the field with artificial turf. They want to construct a multi-use building, which is essentially a concession stand, press box, locker room facility. They want, they're gonna want the new dugouts, and they want batting cages and the fencing. Pretty, pretty simple project. It's not a grandiose, not a grandiose stadium that, that I've heard discussed from, from some folks. It's a, a very simple replacement of what's there, with the exception of adding artificial, artificial turf instead of the natural grass turf. So that's kind of where we're at. Once, if the, if we do move forward and, and sign the contract, we would start the design process. And one of the first things we do in the design process is have a kickoff meeting. We'd establish a design team. We would expect that village staff would be participating as members of that design team. We'd have a kickoff meeting that if we decided was necessary, we could also include a, a community meeting around that same timeframe to take input from the community. So we are really at the very, very beginning stages of this process. Then you move through the design process, and it, it starts with a conceptual design, and then schematic design, and then design development. So there's four major stages of the design phase. At the end of each one of those phases, we will come to the village council and show you where we're at with the design, to allow you to provide input, to allow the community to provide input. No decision gets made on this project without both input from the baseball program, the school district, and the village. So we want to make sure that this is very much a team effort. We understand it's village property, and we think that we're in good position to move forward to help the baseball program get what it is that they, that they want. So I'm standing by to ask any, or answer any questions that you guys may have.
Counsel, anybody have any questions?
I do.
Okay.
I'm a little concerned that this project has been going on, as you said, for two years. Maybe I'm falling behind time on occasion, but I just don't recall this being brought to us from the staff. And it appears you've been working with the staff as well for some time. It never really touched on us at all, that I know of. It just never has. And for you to be very much along with this project amazes me that I, for one, was only apprised of it recently. Now, I'm not averse to your project. I have some thoughts about stands and dugouts and all that, but the use of the property has increased over the years from the school. And the coach can probably verify this, I think you could use it for, help me, coach, I used to play, what is it? Lacrosse. And probably there are other sports, soccer possibly as well, that the facility can be used for. So the, the demand and for the usage has increased, and I understand that. So I would support the usage of the property. I have some thoughts about building stadium-type seats and dugouts and all that sort of thing. But the most important thing is, is the surfacing. I think that deserves additional content. I looked it up, just for your own thought, it started in 1964. I'll give you the name of the company that promoted it, but it started in 64. But there are some problems with that as well, and I want to know some answers to that. But my main point is, for two years, you've been working on this, and I don't think the public has been known to be part of it. This panel here has not been part of it, and that bothers me. I talked to John, Dick, and he was amazed that I didn't have some answers or questions about it, and that we are not really participating to the degree that you are suggesting, either we should be now, or will be in the future. So that's my problem. And I know you're trying to rectify it, but I have a problem with the fact that you've been working with the staff, which is fine, but there's been no contact with this board here, and it should have, it should have happened a year ago, to say the least. That's my problem. Okay? Thank you.
And my recollection is staff has provided updates to council. I know there was one when Ted was here. There was another update by Rich Russell directly. He's a member of the Parks and Recreation Committee. He has updated the Parks and Recreation Committee on this project. So, you know, we can try to go back and find exactly at which meetings those updates occurred. But there has been information conveyed, whether it was to this council or to the previous council. It's just that this is the point where we're ready to really move forward. So, but there's nothing that's concrete, set in stone, and the public and the council will be involved in, you know, the design process as explained in the council communication.
Does any other council have anything they want to say? Okay.
Thanks for the presentation, it's certainly helpful. I think that, that the concern I'm hearing is that, well, I, I appreciate your explanation that we haven't moved to the design phase. I think actually the, the confusion is around the scope of work. And I, I think there is an interest in the, the, from the community to participate in what that scope of work looks like. It's a pretty extensive list, and I think some of the issues here are a concern. And, and I would love to see a community meeting around this list that comprises the scope of work. Because my sense, and, and maybe you can help me with this, Maria, is that right now, what you're, we're really looking for is, you're looking for a decision by this council to allow the manager you to sign off on this RFP. Is that?
No, I think the next step is that the attorneys are looking over the agreement with the design-build.
The design-build contract that we're preparing.
And before the village signs off on that contract, that would come to council, and then that's where that scope can be reviewed.
Well, there, there would be a preliminary thing to council showing us what they're talking about before they go to final thing, to make sure that we have any issues with that, or our staff's gonna alert us that.
So right now, as in our package, it, it shows what, the scope of work, it's, it's all detailed. And I, I think that that is causing people to freak out a little bit, because I, I think there's a lot of conversation that people want to have about, about what we're gonna ask the designers to, to create. So I, I, I would hate to get those designers on board and then say, you know what, no, we don't want that. I wonder if we can back up just a little bit to make this successful for, for everybody.
And we don't want to move forward with a scope of work that you all are not comfortable with.
I appreciate that. Yeah, I, and I.
In fact, we may not move forward at all if we can't get to an agreement on a scope of work, because it wouldn't make sense to do a project if, in fact, it's not really an improvement for the baseball program.
Absolutely. And, and I think that we're in a, a great spot to be having this conversation and then involve the community.
Well, we, we do that in our own projects often. We start out with a certain scope of work, and then find out, you know, through the design, that it's not possible to do, but we've even gotten to the point of having plans brought to council, those plans and the results of an RFP process or RFQ process to select a contractor. And then council has opted not to move forward with, with the project. So there's a number of steps where council authorization will be requested.
Okay. Go, go ahead, Mark.
I guess my problem is, and I guess this is, and I have a cold, I apologize, but I guess my problem with a lot of the stuff we do here in the village is we seem to do stuff first that we should be done second, if that makes any sense. I don't see the point in spending the money to put together a contract when I agree with Elizabeth that this scope is what everybody's freaking out over. And if it's something that the community, and I'm here for the community, I'm a graduate of Coral Shores, love the school, went there myself, first through 12th grade, shows you how old I am, there's only one school. But, I mean, I'm a big supporter, but yet we can't lose sight that this is a park and not part of Coral Shores. I'm sorry, but that's how I feel and a lot of people do. So to keep going forward before there is input from the community and from this council, to me seems we're putting, again, as I've said before, the horse before the cart, or the cart behind the horse, or however that works. So that's, that's my feeling.
Mark?
I just wanted to make one comment before the design goes much further. I, I've seen some correspondence and emails and so forth concerning the trees. And as you can see, when you drove in, it is a magnificent park, the trees are beautiful. Twenty-plus years ago, when this was converted from plantation yacht harbor to Founders Park, many of the trees that you see were actually moved from their original location because of their beauty and because of the value that they bring, not just monetary their beauty and because of the value that they bring, not just monetarily, but aesthetically and environmentally. So, uh, I'll tell you in advance, uh, when, when it comes my term to vote on this, I'm going to be looking at the trees and I sure hope you do your best to save them all.
We've got that message loud and clear and there are no current plans to remove any of the trees.
Very good. Thank you.
So Coach Holly, can you say, I'd like to know a little bit of where, uh, now you're the athletic director, right?
Yes, sir.
So give us a little synopsis of, I mean, because baseball is important. I mean, I know there's been a lot of kids from Coral Shores that have got full scholarships and gone to good colleges and stuff, so-
And more to come.
Yeah, okay. Well, to, give us a little bit about, since you're here.
I had the opportunity in 2011 to come to Coral Shores. Coach Russell hired me and, um, it was, you know, this project and about, you know, what's, and improvements at Coral Shores High School, not at Founder's Park, but at Coral Shores High School, about how we improve the facilities. Started back then. And, um, this was not a, a Founder's, just at Coral Shores High School. And people, the number one question we get is, when are we going to do this? And when are we going to do that? And, and that happened way back then. And so I had an opportunity. I left for a little while. I came back. Ms. Leotart was nice enough to hire me back and, and take over as the athletic director. And the number one question I get from everybody in the community is, listen, we were on, supposedly on track through the, through the school board, um, to have some facility upgrades at the high school and then Irma hit. And everything went to Marathon High School. Now, if you look at Marathon High School, their brand new stadium and everything. And then everybody got, in the Upper Keys, got excited again. And I've been living here the whole time. I'm not only athletic director, I have four kids. And I got two kids who go and play baseball and I got them on the football field and I got them in the classroom, more importantly. But then all of a sudden it went to Tommy Roberts and then it went to Key West. And the number one question is, are we going to have the opportunity for our kids that they do? And having the opportunity, there's so much excitement out there. And I understand about the policies. I understand about, hey, listen, we don't want to touch a tree. We want to make sure we have the best facility in the Upper Keys. When we come in, we want it to be a showpiece. We want it to be magnificent. When somebody walks in, drives down US-1 or comes to a festival at Founder's Park, they say, wow, look at that. Not only the community cares about the high school and, and future, but it also about, hey, listen, this is going to be a magnificent place, not only for that, but for Little League, for boys and girls soccer, for girls and boys lacrosse, for everything on the outside, the field that's used. Because as we know, there's not a lot of space. So just in, I'll give you an example, because I am having to be the football coach and, um, blessed to do that. You know, we started a middle school football team. And what's the one thing we had was space issues and Key Largo School. Now we have flag football. And just last night, we were playing at Harry Harris. We had 170 kids out there playing, but we need field space. And that field space and with the turf and with whatever the design build is there, it is desperately needed. When I was at another school, we actually came to Coral Shores High School to play baseball. I used to be at Westminster Christian. And we used to count it, call it the Founder's Hop. Because at Founder's Hop, that ball, you never know where it would go. And it was the craziest thing. And we want the safest, most energizing, uh, facility we can possibly have with obviously not touching the trees, with making sure we stay in the same framework and all that. And then, and then as a dad, you know, you sit there and I've, I've sat there through many, many practices. And, you know, just the pride that the kids have and not only the community, but the baseball field. There's a very, people are very, very, and the community is very, very excited for, to see this to go forward. And, um, I don't know about the legalese, this is the first time I had the blessing to talk to you guys, but we are excited about the scope. We're excited about this happening. We're excited about the energy behind it. We're excited about the, uh, the opening day. And I, sometimes I think about that ribbon cutting ceremony because it's going to be special. And I can't wait to take a picture with everybody here at that day.
Well, I, I want to say thank you personally for, for what Coral Shores has turned into today. Because I remember our old locker rooms when we played football, man. We had that, that eight-man sled or whatever we drove around. We ate salt tablets like crazy. But, but, you know, we made it work. But what it is today, you know, the football games you guys have, the people are piling in there. So all ages too.
And that's one thing I kept brought back is that not only do you have the opportunity to lead young men and, and get guys graduated, but for us, not only are they four-year students, they're eight years. Listen, we, we celebrate when they graduate from Coral Shores High School, but we have a party when they graduate from college. But a big part of that is getting them to college, giving them the best facilities to play so they have the opportunity. So coaches can come in, so teams can come in. So as, we, 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 we show our brand everywhere. Just the other day, our basketball, women's basketball team went to Orlando. Those guys didn't know who Coral Shores High School. Well, they do right now. And so with the facility that's going to, hopefully, that's going to be built and that goes through there, it's going to be, it's going to put us on the map. Just like, you know, when you think about Key West, what do you think about? Most people think about baseball. Well, we want to think about men and women's sports at Coral Shores. And this is a great, great, fantastic place to start. And listen, as a member of the community and as, and as a, not only a DAD, but a dad, and I, and I talk to people all the time, they are just so excited about what's about to happen. We're going to explode at Coral Shores High School.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Can I just ask one more question? So, so I, I love your enthusiasm and it's very infectious. Um, but would you guys be opposed to having a community meeting to, to discuss the scope? Does it-
No opposition.
Okay, great. Would, well, how should we make that happen? Um, is that opposed, I mean, is anyone else opposed to that?
No, I was saying the same thing. I think he said that earlier, that they would do a community meeting.
I'm just trying to make, you know, just, just to clarify it. Is it something that we could, I know we, we have this exciting new, um, process called the After Meeting Action Report. And I wonder if we can put that, um, on our, there's got to be an acronym for that, on that to make that happen. Because there's such a mix in our community. We have a lot of parents with kids and a lot of people who don't have kids. So I think it would make this a, um, a more successful event if we actually had a meeting prior to, prior to seeing that RFQ come back to us.
Okay. So you guys can make that happen with our staff and, and, uh, you know?
Speaking about exciting.
That's exciting.
Mr. Mayor.
How that happens. Yes, John.
Can, can I ask for, there's one thing I wanted to mention on this and I wanted to get some guidance from the council as well. Um, we have been, since, as part of this issue, we've, we've been looking into the interlocal agreement and whatnot and, and trying to locate the, the fully executed ones, um, uh, recorded with the county clerks. I haven't been able to locate that. I have spoken with the attorney for the school board. We both think it's a good idea. Listen, this was drafted over 20 years ago anyway. Um, we both think it's a good idea to update the interlocal agreement, um, and, uh, prepare something to bring back to our respective boards. I will bring it back to the council. Obviously, they would bring it back to the school board for, for approval. I would just like to see if I can get the approval of the council to move forward to update that. And then obviously, we will, um, legally record it, uh, assuming it's approved by both respective boards. Okay?
I say yes. A lot's happened in the last 22 years. It's time for a freshening up.
I say yes as well.
Elizabeth, Sharon, okay?
Thank you.
All five of us. Okay. Thank both of you. Coach Holly, thank you, sir, for coming from Key West. And, uh, you guys get with our staff and let's see what we can do and get this community meeting going.
Absolutely.
And help give these guys a home to play some ball.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
So do we need to, so, so we're just, to be clear then, Maria, you're going to add that to the report to happen in the next month or so, or month and a half or so?
Based on council availability.
Okay.
Well, that'll be the big driver as well.
But that doesn't have to, I mean, we don't have to, this, this is a community meeting, right? So we don't actually have to be there. Is that fair?
Well, it could be, but I, I'd plan on being there. I'd plan on us being there to see it. It could. Yeah.
But it's more, I mean, it's, it's community input. That's what we're looking for. Just, and, so I, I just want to, I'm so excited about this after action item report that I might annoy you tonight with my, just let's get clear on what we're, the direction we're giving, given. So just, you know, saying that in advance.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Thank you. All right. Um, so, so with, with that being said, we're going to move the mosquito control up now and then we will do public comment after that. And thank you guys, you young guys for coming. The baseball coach and coming over to say hi and Coach Russell and-
Are we supposed to do public comment?
Uh, do, no, I don't think so, John.
This was a discussion item, but for the, the mosquito control, you will need specific public comment for that.
Okay. So let me see. Let me get my thing here. Make sure I'm not getting ahead of Maria. Tab 21.
And 21 is going to be in the second book in the-
Right. I got-
Hey, buddy.
Can we address public comment on the baseball field?
Could we actually, um, allow for a minute of public comment? Because this is an issue, this baseball thing that's so charged up.
That's why they're here.
Um, would you be willing to open it for like, public comment on this?
Sure. I mean, that's what we, we're the council, so if we, okay. Okay, go ahead. All right, any public comment for the baseball field?
Let's keep going.
Okay, go ahead.
So my name is Steve Friedman. I'm an Almerada resident and the proud father of two Coral Shore students, one of which is on the baseball team and another that is about to start on the ladies lacrosse team. So, um, athletics in the school is very important to me. Uh, and my son injured himself on that field last year, uh, going after a routine fly ball and a sanctioned practice, um, and unfortunately landed wrong and, and broke his collarbone. Um, our coach's son blew out his knee in the infield during a game. Uh, teams won't come here to compete because of the way that field is. So I'm a little bit concerned with more meetings. It sounds to me like more delays. Um, I, I really feel like nobody's even asked the question about the funding of this. It's almost as if the village is coming up with the money for this facility. I don't think that's entirely accurate, is it? No. So really, what I think that the council needs to do is make up for maybe some lack of communication, maybe some, some gaps in that and delays by expediting this so that we can get moving on those next parts. I think that you, we've all heard that there will be respect for the environment, do as much as we can for water runoff and, and for the trees. But let's face it, we're the last in line for this right now. This is way overdue. Key West has already had it. Marathon's got it. So we're not, we're not looking for something totally extravagant. We're looking for something safe. We're looking for something multi-use. We're looking for something that's going to encourage other teams to come and compete and show what their athletes can do against our student athletes. So I would urge you all to not only accept this, but expedite it. You do more community, community meetings, it's just going to be more delay. You're going to have more cooks in the kitchen and that's just going to cause more issues, in my opinion. So, uh, once again, I appreciate all your efforts on our behalf and thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Marty, who's next?
Tom Raffanello, Isla Marata. I played baseball since I was about this big. I understand all of the above. Love playing baseball. Played in college till I got drafted and went into the army. Here's the first, and first and foremost, you have no legal agreement. It's not that you can't find it. It doesn't exist. It expired. There were things that supposedly brought the council together with the board that never happened over the past few years. Here's my advice, first and foremost, before you expedite anything, have an agreement with the board about parameters and what you want. And, and I urge the council to give direction to the general counsel. The worst thing you could do is set a lawyer free without guidance. So give him the guidance that he needs to get this done and then go from there. And make sure, and as much as I agree with Mr. Freeman in a lot of ways, make sure you do this right. You don't have to rush into anything. Just make sure you do it right and everybody will be happy. Thanks.
Thank you, Tom.
I spoke for that field 22, I'm Van Cadenhead from-
Who you are, please.
I was trying to. I'm Van Cadenhead from Almerata. And I spoke for this field when Coral Shores is being rehabbed, rebuilt. And, uh, it's worked just fine, to my knowledge, for, for 20-some years. There's always going to be injuries on any field, no matter what the surface is. But, uh, it's worked for 20-some years the way it is without any kind of a contract. There's been no signed contract that you can find to bring out and show us because it hasn't existed. So, so we're, we're just talking about a moot point here because we don't have anything to go from. No, no history, uh, that's been made. Um, there's, there's a lot of questions, especially about the surfacing and artificial turf. There's a lot of, uh, injury, uh, problems with artificial turf. They're taking it out of certain schools. They're not putting it in pro fields. There's, there's pro teams that won't play because they, they don't want to play on artificial turf and, and ruin their careers. And, and this whole thing has gone on without any transparency. There have been people in the upper echelons of the village who have gotten too big for their britches, who have taken it upon themselves to make these deals behind the scenes and ensure the school board and ensure the, the, uh, staff that this is a viable project that's going on. But you people are just now learning about it. And, and it's, it's our money, it's our land. And we fought to have this property and we gave the school board a really good deal, I think for, for 20-some odd years now. And for them, for them to come back, and, and I can see wanting to upgrade. I can see wanting to have higher fences so that the foul balls don't got, go out into US-1. And there's a whole lot of other things that I agree with about, about the project. But the transparency has been zero. You have not allowed the public, this is, the only public comment we had was because Friedman elbowed his way in here. And, and the fact that the, the general public that owns the property has not been allowed to comment on it at all in any sense of the word. And you people are just now coming into the, to the, uh, realization that there is no contract, uh, available for you to survey because there's never been a contract. It just hasn't expired. I mean, they, they should have, if they had a contract, it should have been renewed, you know, years ago. But it hasn't been. So we got a whole lot of other things to do and it's, it's the cart before the horse, dear. And that's what's been going on here, a whole lot. And it's, it's been going on, not only, it's a lack of leadership. I mean, it's, it's, uh, in the managers department, we've had, uh, confusion. On the council, we've had darkness because you know nothing about it. Thank you very much. I appreciate-
I just want to say one thing. People can come and speak at general public comment. If it's not on the agenda, they can come to public comment, that pulpit you're at, and speak on general public comment. And if they want to speak about the ball field, they are more than welcome.
We have 30 items on the agenda tonight, sir.
Okay. I'm just saying-
Okay. And there's, there's plenty of other places for the public to comment.
Thank you, Van.
And thanks to, thanks for the guys here in the, in the cleats cavalcade and the parade of propaganda. And I really hope that we can get them a good baseball field. Thank you.
Thank you, Van. Anybody else want to speak on the ball field?
I'm Alina Davis, uh, Plantation Key resident. I am on the Parks and Rec Committee, but I am not speaking on behalf of the Parks and Rec Committee, but as a citizen of Isla Marata. On November the 15th, 2023, we had our last Parks and Rec meeting. At that meeting, we were asked to approve the minutes of the April 18 meeting. These minutes are currently being amended to more accurately depict Richie Russell's very general description of the baseball field improvements. When Richie Russell made his presentation to village council with the drawings of the proposed baseball field, he stated that the Parks and Rec Committee was intimately familiar with the project. This could not have been possible as that was the first time I had seen it and I'm sure no one else on the committee had ever seen it. Tonight, we heard Mr. LaFier address the council. Mr. LaFier met with several members of village staff on March 16th, 2022. Richard Russell did not make an informational presentation to Parks and Rec Committee before November 2022, as is stated in your council communication paperwork. We, the people, elect you, village council, to give direction to the village manager, who in turn tasks the various staff members. It seems that in this case, staff know quite a bit about the school board's concept for the project, but you didn't and we, the people, didn't. The Founder's Park is an Isla Marata park and what happens and is built or not built should be decided in open workshops so that the citizens will have an opportunity to weigh in with their opinions. Thank you.
Thank you, Alina. Uh, anybody else want to speak?
Somebody else speak.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll try to, uh, be in control of my comments. Uh, first of all, when we talked to the Park and Recreation, I prefaced, it seemed to be omitted, I prefaced, this was a vision, that we were not in the design pha-phase and we've, as, as Pat has so eloquently stated. It's not like anything's gone anywhere at this point in time. In order of things, and no, it is not, please do not be talking when I'm talking. It has not gone anywhere, but I'll go back and tell you that, uh, Henry, I talked to you about this project after church more than two years ago. I think in order, buddy, I probably talked to you about two years ago. We're talking about concepts. And we're talking about a concept that the school board is completely underwriting. They have allocated $5 million of improvements to the village of Almerata. And I jokingly said, there'll be some character in this village- said, there'll be some character in this village that says, hey, you know what, that's a gorgeous facility, and that may be the safest, and that may be, you know, the most environmental-friendly facility in North America, but you, guess what, we're not going to want it. We'll take your $5 million, and you keep it, you shove it down your throat. Forget about our kids, forget about, you know, the needs of this community. What we designed here and what we have a vision for, forgive me. What we have a vision for, and hopefully we'll design, is something that can not only be used for baseball, but that can be used 12 months of the year. And it can serve not just the needs of the high school, it'll serve the needs of our lacrosse youth, our baseball youth, our soccer youth. It will serve the needs of our adults. We have co-ed kickball that can use that facility, if the vision is carried out, made into a design, and then built out. Same is true of softball, same is true, and I got a feeling there's going to be a lot of things that folks in this community come up with, it's just that we haven't even approached yet. Okay, so I just want to make sure that things are not mischaracterized, usually a little term like, you know, this is the vision, and I did want to share with what our baseball coaches have been talking about. And obviously, I've been at the school 50-some years, right? Been involved in baseball since eighth grade. Because will I be approached, you know, for some input along with other people? I hope so. And that has been the case, but it's got no further than that. And this narrative that got so out of control, and talking about, I Googled this about AstroTurf, you know, and it, you know, five years ago, there have been so many iterations and improvements and generations that addressed the turf, you know, to now we've got Monopoly that everybody's going to, spoke to a representative at length last week, Coach Holly and I had him for 90 minutes. He's getting ready to take on, they're doing the contract with the Philadelphia Eagles, which will be the 16th team. People are adding, okay, because of the improvements, and because of the safety involved, and because it's more environmentally friendly than it ever has been. And no, we're not cutting down trees. I said on that committee, I was on the committee for the RFQ, and I said, if part of this deal's cutting down our trees, I'm jumping, I'll jump on the opposition.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hey, Tony, before you start, I just want to say something. I don't know if everybody in this room knows, Richie played, he got a full ride to University of Miami football. He was their leading tackler. That's the talent that came out of Coral Shores in 1975 when we graduated, okay? He got selected as a full academic and a full football scholarship. I actually went to Miami with him, met Herschel Walker, who's a pro player there, Perk, the trainer. You know, I know if you're in South Korea, she's the University of Miami, I mean, the University of Florida. So anyways, go ahead, Tony, I'm sorry.
All right, Tony Hammond, 246 Jasmine Street, Isla Marada. I believe I was the second baseball coach at Coral Shores, graduated from Coral Shores, played baseball for Coral Shores then, piece of trivia history, played community baseball at Florida Keys Community College, along with Jimmy Mooney, till we said, it's time to quit. And I was a baseball coach, second baseball coach at Coral Shores after Roger Allen, and then coached at Island Christian School, I've been coaching baseball for about 40 years. I was Little League president, toughest job I ever had was being president of Little League, wasn't pastoring, wasn't principal of the school, it was being the president of Little League because of the needs. I want to stress, the thing you have to keep before you is the health, safety, and well-being of the entire population, but particularly the students and those ball players on the field. That field should have been redone multiple times. I would try to redo my field about every five or six years, and down here, it is extremely difficult to keep the sod growing. We need the facilities. Take all the other rhetoric about the expanse of it, that's not even, we're not, it's not even on the table yet. You get to describe what you want, and the public gets to describe what they want, but get people involved in baseball, people that know the game of baseball, and let them design a facility that will honor Isla Marada, will be a trophy for this place. And I remember when Mike Lanin and the original Village Council went into an interlocal agreement, whether it's anything on paper or not, I remember that because I was involved in those steps, because I was involved with baseball at the time, so, thank you.
Thanks, Tony. Anybody else like to speak?
Captain Ed would like to speak.
Okay. Anybody else after Captain Ed, Marty?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Yeah, are we doing three minutes, you speaking yourself, Captain Ed?
No, I'm speaking for the Florida Keys Citizens Coalition, as I always do, and I should get the five minutes that I usually do. You've given tons of time to other people that didn't sign up in advance like I did tonight.
Okay, that's okay, we're letting you speak. Okay, I just wanted to know, because I had another council person ask, are you speaking on behalf of yourself, or this, what is the name and organization again?
Florida Keys Citizens Coalition.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
For the record, I'm Captain Ed Davidson, chairman of Florida Keys Citizens Coalition and former elected member of the school board, having attended more than 400 school board meetings. Okay? You just voted on a contract matter, on renegotiating a contract with the lawyers, but no public comment. That was a vote, you all agreed, head nods, thumbs up, those are votes. You need to reconsider that. This is, the disingenuous claim, I'm a documents guy, I have, there are lots of documents, I've shared some of them with John, I better give him the rest of them, I guess, is disingenuous claim that at this time there are no design plans for improvements. I showed you to this before, when we started all this. This is the winning bid of a $5 million contract, okay? This is not a drawing on a bar napkin, and in the bid that the school board just signed, all of the details of what are drawn in here are in the contract that they already signed without having Mr. Lefier spend some traveling time to come up and talk to you. Detailed, all it means is there's no detailed construction drawings. There's plenty of documentation about a lot of other things. The renderings are of a grandiose, multi-story stadium complex. This is the aerial I showed you last meeting. This building, clearly, any way you turn it, is sitting on tree stumps. You can't build this building without taking out a bunch of trees. And there are reasons that you shouldn't and can't do that legitimately. And yet, neither AJ nor Richie Russell nor Mr. Lefier nor Ted Yates thought this was worthy of explaining to you and getting your opinions a long time ago. These are, this is pages one and three of the contract that the school board already signed, at Mr. Lefier's insistence to put pressure on you. I was at the meeting. These are all detailed descriptions of what's in that drawing. So, and do you really believe that anybody could listen to the former commander of the Key West Naval Air Station at Boca Chica for two years and not know exactly what he had in mind? And that's what's in the drawing? They won the $5 million bid with it. This is the document that admits that they were going to trash 25 to 30 mahogany trees when they built the ball diamond, and promising to plant 50-plus mahogany trees to be planted. No evidence that that ever occurred, but if any of those 89 trees around the existing field were mitigation trees for that original planting, they are legally sacrosanct, you can't harm a one of them. And then the contract further says, the AstroTurf is a huge environmental disaster. The contractor states, in the winning bid, here's the quote, "Our team will improve the site's perimeter drainage collection and conveyance systems in addition to implementing the turf underdrain system. This will allow for stormwater," that means rain, the lifeblood of trees, "to flow out and away, in the detail, exported to tide." Because of our porosity, the porosity of our geology, this will likely damage many of those trees for lack of water. There's no documentary proof of response to that letter. This is the document, the page, which I did share with John. There's a more specific agreement called the Baseball Field License Agreement. This is the one that says you got to submit renewal in writing six to 12 months in advance of expiration, two years ago. That wasn't done, it says very clearly, "If licensee fails to exercise its options, such options shall be deemed to have lapsed and terminated and be of no further force and effect without any action or notice required by Isla Marada."
Okay, Captain Ed, your time is up.
Okay, you should give me some of Richie's courtesy time. There's lots of document. This is the one I'll share as I leave the stand. This is the list of the original stuff that Richie has many times claimed they're entitled to. This is a list of what they were supposed to build. It's all about drainage, topsoil, and so forth, but it says clubhouse, clubhouse for $250,000.
Captain Ed, we got a long meeting ahead of us.
Yes, you do. This is not a $250,000 clubhouse, they're not entitled to this.
Captain Ed, thank you very much.
You need to have a workshop, the public deserves to have something to say about this.
I said, the time is up, okay?
Okay, thank you.
I'm trying to be very nice about it.
And Richie forgot to tell you that all the improvements in the rest of the school district are on land they already own, not ours.
Thank you, Captain Ed. Yes, come on, would you like to speak? Okay, come on. Can you state your name for us, please, and tell us? Okay.
My name is Jennifer Lavoy, I'm a resident of Tavernier, I've lived here since 97. I'm a Monroe County teacher for 10 years. I teach kindergarten. Every May, I go to little T-ball games. I have at least 10 kids this year that are going to play out of 25, so that's a huge amount. You know, bottom line is, these kids can't vote, we have to be the voices for them. I am definitely a part of the community. I've worked in Chad's Restaurant, I have know so many people through that. These kids need someone to look out for them. My son has been playing since he's four at Harry Harris, he's probably there 300 days of the year. Now he's 16 years old. To, things are changing. Things, like, everyone likes to stay with what's comfortable and keep it the same, but that's not life. Life is constantly changing. If everyone was in charge of their life and had no problems and we were in control, that's not how life works. Things change, you need improvements, just like your house. You put on a roof 20 years ago, that's just part of it. It's wear and tear. It's, we live in the Keys, we have floods, we have hurricanes, like, you can't just say, oh, well, it was good then, and now it's still, like, that's not reality, that's not how it works. Also, we're getting $5 million from the school. Yes, we are using the village's property, but it's kind of like if you are renting your house, what owner, what landlord is going to be like, oh my gosh, I don't want you to add $5 million to my property to make it a better place, to make it safer so you don't get sued with a ball going over. Eventually, at some point, if we're worried about numbers, at some point, 100%, during a game, there's probably about 10 balls that go over the net into the US1. And one of these days, it is going to kill somebody. They're at least going 45, probably 50, you take 50 miles an hour car with a ball going over into someone's windshield, that is going to be way more than any amount of money that you've ever spent. And if someone's loved one, if you think about your loved ones getting killed by a baseball, that is a major, major problem. And it just doesn't seem that, if you forget about the, I don't know about all the rules and who has to sign or any of that, I just try to think of it as a kindergarten teacher, keeping it simple. These kids deserve, deserve a place to play. I mean, my son has got hurt before on fields, cut open his eye, all this stuff, he's like taking boulders and throwing it off.
Thank you for your time.
I just want to say one more thing. My son is trying to get a scholarship for school, junior year, and this is just one more, it's hard enough in life to get, you know, it's very, it's very competitive. But if coaches don't come down to see because of the field, and, you know, we're already, it's really hard already, being a small community, having scouts come down, but now we're adding more on their plate.
Thank you. Thank you for coming and speaking. All right, does anybody else want to speak about the ball field? Marty? Have anybody else?
I don't have anyone on
All right, so with that being said, the public comment is now closed. And Coach Russell, Coach Holly, and young man from Key West there, thank you very much for you guys coming and speaking to us, and all the baseball players here, thank you very much. Thank everybody that spoke, Captain Freeman, thank you. And we're going to, the five of us are going to see what we can do to make this happen, and we'll hopefully, we'll have everybody happy, okay? All right, so thank you, you guys. Okay, we are going to, the mosquito control is going to come up, and then we're going to go to public comment, so, what's that? Tab 21.
You're on tab 21, and for those in the physical binders, it's the first tab in the white binder. Tab 21 is a resolution of the Village Council of Isla Marada, Village of Islands, Florida, approving interlocal agreement between Isla Marada, Village of Islands, and the Florida Keys Mosquito Control District pursuant to Chapter 163 Florida statutes and providing for an effective date.
Yeah. And we also, Commissioner Zubba, would you like to stand up? I recognize you because you're on the mosquito control. And they just actually lost District 5. Everybody knows that Tom McDonald had a biking accident and is no longer with us, and Tom's been there a long time. So we're all very, very sad for the McDonald family, yeah. So Andrea?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I'm Andrea Leo, the Executive Director at the Florida Keys Mosquito Control District, and appreciate you all considering the interlocal agreement with us at mosquito control. I also want to introduce, my Director of Aerial Operations is here as well, Edgar De La Serta, so he's got the expertise on all of those aircraft that you see flying around. So my hope is to answer any questions that you guys may have on this agreement and our operations tonight. Okay. I got a little crazy. Okay, so all of you know our district is a special taxing district, we have about a $15 million operating budget, 70 employees, and of those, over half of those are inspectors. So we really rely upon those inspectors to give us real-time information as to what's going on. Currently, we have five helicopters. Our airplanes were recently removed from our operations, so we're looking at being an all helicopter fleet. We are in the middle of that fleet turnover, we have three new helicopters and two older helicopters, so we will be getting one more new helicopter within the next few years as we raise funds, so we will have four of those aircraft that you see there. Everything we do at the district is science-based. You know, we get calls all the time saying, what's the schedule? When is the truck coming by? When are you going to send the helicopter? And the answer is, we can't tell you ahead of time, right? So we're out there every single day, finding where those mosquitoes are, and we'll react to what we're seeing out there. So there is no schedule, everything we do is based upon what we're seeing out there in the field. And all of that starts at the ground level, and then from there, it gets translated into what do we need our aircraft to do. So I thought it would be good to kind of show you guys a close-up of around this area. All of those different outlined areas are areas that produce mosquito larvae that we treat with a helicopter or by hand on a regular basis when we have tides and rainfall. So you can see, there are a lot of areas right here next to us that produce mosquito larvae. There we go. And what we do is we treat with what's called BTI, Bacillus thuringiensis israeliensis, and this is a soil-based bacterium that is specific to mosquito And this is a soil-based bacterium that is specific to mosquito larvae only. So it has no other non-target effects. It does affect black fly larvae, but we don't have those here. So it's really something that the district has focused on because we want to be as environmentally sensitive as possible. This product, we can actually use on protected lands by U.S. Fish and Wildlife. It's the only product allowed, and we were actually the first that were allowed to do so off of the Big Pine Key area. So very safe product and effective on mosquitoes only. So some of the questions we get a lot about BTI, you know, again, what are the health risks to human? This is all from the EPA. There are no tox... There's no toxicity to people. This product is approved in organic farming operations, and again, is, is approved on protected U.S. Fish and Wildlife lands. Any special precautions to be taken during BTI spraying? The answer is no. Again, this has no effects whatsoever on humans, other insects, the environment at all. And that includes our honeybees. Of course, you know, we are sensitive to make sure that we're doing our best to protect the environment. And also, this product, we are, again, looking at applying in the wetlands that are around. So we're not looking at, you know, going and spraying this over the soccer field when, you know, everyone's out there. That's not what this is for. This targets water only. And again, the district is really proud of where we're going with this. We are continually increasing the amount of BTI that we're using every year, and because of that, we've been able to decrease that adulticide product. And those adulticide products can be general target insecticides. We try to spray when we don't have non-targets out flying around that we're concerned with, but because we're able to increase that larvicide use, we have been able to decrease our aerial adulticide and our truck fogging. So something that we've been really proud to do. And this kind of takes you through the operation. So the operation has a duly with a grain holder behind it. We'll park in an area, mark the site where the helicopter is to land, and then the helicopter will approach and land on the site. So you can kind of see as he's approaching. So he'll come and put the helicopter exactly where it's supposed to be, at the right amount away from the truck itself. So that's basically what our operation will look like. And then continuing. So there's the truck, and the product holder right there has a hose on the ground that will come out to the helicopter that then we will fill each side of the hopper with. So that's the whole operation. So it's all contained right there together. We won't be leaving anything on-site. We'll be coming in with everything that we need and then leaving with, with everything that we came with. So the interlocal agreement that is in front of you tonight is for the use of the Great Lawn. We will be notifying the village staff prior to any use. We will secure the area prior to use, so not only will we have signs, you know, saying helicopter landing, do not enter, especially our first few missions there, we're going to make sure we have extra staff on hand to make sure that, you know, we aren't having any sort of safety issues. Again, the only things that are going to be on here are BTI and the jet fuel that's on the truck itself. The agreement does say that we will maintain the condition of the field, so, you know, should anything happen, should we make divots with our truck, should we do anything that changes the condition of that field, we will be responsible and we will mitigate. Additionally, our insurance, we do have the village as a named insurer on our aviation insurance, so anything that happens is on us, our insurance. Same with workers' compensation, anything like that. So, you know, really, there is no risk, and we will do our, our best as we do it, all of our landing zones, to make sure that the site is safe and that we leave no trace of our use behind. We anticipate to use the field probably six to 10 times per year, so it's not going to be an every-week thing. Of course, it'll be based upon rainfall or tides. There's really only about 200 to 300 acres in that area, so we're, we're looking at probably two loads. So the helicopter would come in, reload, take off, come in, reload, take off, and that would really be it. So short timeframe, between the hours of probably 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM. I'm trying to think of all the questions that everyone might have in their heads, but, but yeah, so six to 10 times a year. The product, as you see, is a benign product that we can put throughout wetlands, anywhere we need to. And yeah, so I can take any questions you all have. I also did put our QR code up there for anyone that's interested. We have a notification app that you can download on your phone and sign up for, so anytime we do any mosquito control operations in your area, you can get a notification for our helicopter and trucks in your area, so, for those that are interested. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about this.
Okay, council, anybody have any questions for Andrea? Yeah, go ahead. Mark?
Hi. Just a couple of quick questions. If I understood you correctly, the only mosquito insecticide type of a product is the BTI? Is that, that's the only thing that's going to be?
That is the only thing that will be used on the field. Yes, that is correct.
So, say it differently, there won't be any other transfers of other products in particular NALID?
Correct.
Okay. And then, as far as a fuel spill goes, in the unfortunate event of a fuel spill, it is your responsibility to mitigate that and to, to handle that, and your insurance apparently covers that. So the only other thing is, I guess you'll be coordinating with our staff to make sure that you're not coming in and out when, when there might be a ballgame or an event or a festival or anything like that?
Exactly, yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Chief Abel, I see you back there. I know you guys are here when Trauma Star lands all the time. So probably, I can't remember yesterday whether, when we were talking about this, would you aid the mosquito control if they need help when they're landing their helicopter? Can you answer that question, or could I... Maybe Andrea knows.
I seriously doubt they would ever need our help, but if they needed, absolutely, we're there. They're very professional. They've got this nailed down.
Okay.
Guy knows what he's doing.
Okay, all right. And just for, so council knows, anybody, if you guys have never been to mosquito control and did a tour there, you can see this, all, the whole thing, their hangar is so clean, you could probably eat off of it. I mean, it's, it's really, it's, it's a spectacular operation, the science and stuff they do there. So I would encourage any of us that have never been there to go take a look at it. They'll, they'll give you a very personal tour. They might even have lunch there, you know, if you do it at lunchtime, so... But no, Andrea, is that, aren't they open? If they want to come, they're more than welcome.
And I, I can spring for pizza if you need to have lunch while you're there.
So I don't...
I have a quick question. So does that fall under the Parks and Rec Department or Public Works? Is that outlined anywhere so that there's some path, some clear pathway within the village? This probably doesn't have anything to do with, well, actually does have a lot to do with you. Is that detailed in any place that we could reference?
I believe it's in the agreement that before they utilize the Great Lawn, they contact the Parks and Recreation Department and make sure that it'll be...
It says they'll contact the village, so this would fall under the manager, and then the manager, he or she could designate if they want that to be, to go through, specifically through the manager, him or herself, or through a designee, which could be the Parks Department...
Or the Public Works, yeah.
Public Works, or even Fire Safety, whatever the designation might be. But it'll be up to the manager to designate that.
Could we, could we know more about that? Could we put that on our after-action report to understand what, what that chain, that chain looks like? I would love to know.
Sure, I mean, it's up to the manager, and you know, if the manager will make the decision as to where that will go, and, yeah. I mean...
Is that, do you guys have any interest? You don't care? Okay, well, I'm interested. Thank you.
So to confirm, the council would like an explanation of how, when the village manager, what we'll probably do is provide an email address, the generic email for village manager, and then also the email for Maria Bajiarri as Founder's Park Director, that the mosquito control would send us an email in advance of when they want to utilize the field. So you want us to...
Yeah.
Council agrees you want us to come back with that explanation of, and then we can have Maria here to confirm.
I mean, I, I'm just curious what it looks like. And then is that communicated to the community? I, I mean, I would want to know if I'm planning to go to the park for the day and I can't use that space. So just to process, just what's the process that's attached to this new procedure that's, that's, you know, necessary and nice cooperative and all that, but kind of a disruption to the everyday use of the park?
We have the Go app, something. What is it? Yeah, the app that, well, people have to sign up for it.
Right.
But that would be one way we could get the word out that...
Right, that the mosquito control will be landing on Monday at 9:30 to 10, till 10 or something.
Just curious about the process, that's all. Just a little update.
Yeah, I think we were going to work it out as it happened.
Whenever you have it, that would be great.
All right. So Andrea, if we, does anybody else have any other questions? All right, so I think we're going to open public comment now, then we'll come back. Okay. Marnie, have somebody signed up for that tab? Thank you, Andrea.
I do not.
You don't? Okay, Alina, go ahead.
I just have a quick question. I did the QR code, but it says to fill out the below form to place a service request. It's where it took them. Okay, I will make sure I share that QR code with everybody. Okay, I apologize. I threw the wrong one.
Okay. Okay, all right. Any other public comment for this item? All right, with that being said, public comment is now closed. And so council, do, hey, John, we need to make a motion on this and vote on this, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
I'm comfortable with the arrangements. I don't care for poison, but I don't think they're using poison. In fact, the, the product is certified for organic farming. I have a little experience with that, so that works for me. So I'm in favor of it.
Mark, let me, let me just ask one question, because she said they're using it, if I heard her right, that in Big Pine Key, which is a federal key to their preserve. Right, Andrea, can you come back up there real quick one second?
The more they use of that, the less they use of the nasty stuff. That's what's very important.
Okay. You, you did say that you guys are using that in Big Pine Key, right?
Yes.
And you're approved by the...
And all of those federal offshore islands that are protected lands, yes.
Right, that's what I thought.
Yeah, and that is our goal. Our goal is to continue to do our best to use products like these that are environmentally friendly. However, of course, we're always going to need to use some of those other chemicals, but if we can reduce that need, that's our goal, and we are definitely showing that trend.
Okay, thank you, Andrea. Okay. All right, council, do, do I hear a motion?
I'll move for approval.
I hear a second?
I'll second it.
All right, Marnie, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Mark Gregg?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolyn?
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal?
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
All righty. Thank you, guys, okay? Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Zubba. I, I mean, I'm surprised to see you. You've been, you're traveling. Okay, all right, thank you, guys, for coming.
Thank you.
All right. So with that being said, we're going to move to general public comment, I do believe. If I can find my notes here. So general public comment is now open. Marnie, do we have some takers for that?
Yes, we have seven speakers signed up. First up is Captain Ed Davison, followed by Van Cadenhead, then Tom Raffinello, and when Tom is done, I'll summarize the others.
Okay. All right, go ahead. Come on, Captain Ed. Okay.
I'm, I'm the same Captain Ed Davison I was 10 minutes ago.
Okay.
Well, pretty much.
You're speaking for the same Citizens Coalition?
Yes.
Okay.
This is, with regard to the hurricane evacuation. Talk about passions, Doctor. My lawyers and I have been extensively involved in years of relevant hearings, testimony, debates, and citizen lawsuits over these issues. And what you need to know, particularly relevant to us, is this. The Florida Keys evacuation study is the only single-county model out of 67 counties in the state of Florida. The most vulnerable county is the only one that pretends, while we are fleeing for our lives from the Florida Keys, from a killer hurricane, honest to God, that nobody from Florida City and Homestead to West Palm Beach has left the house. This is the same model they used last time to keep it under the 24-hour evac limit for the real estate and tourism interests. I, I did all this testimony in front of the task force when they were in the Keys. I testified at Marathon, I testified at Glitter. My lawyers have, have been talking to them. But DEO, DCA, used to be, has thrown their hands up and abandoned their oversight role of the Florida Keys. They've had cancellation, veto power over all the building permits for 30 years under critical concern. They've thrown their hands up and are empowering you and all the other governmental entities to ask for however many more permits you want, even though we have no infrastructure capacity. The county, for the second time, has refused to adopt a traffic study because it says we're at 44 miles an hour, we're at D-level, we have no reserve capacity, we're supposed to stop issuing permits on that basis alone. The pipeline people have said it's going to be 15 to 20 years until they're done trenching the highway, and yet the county says that distorts the evacuation figures, so they're not going to adopt this. What? That's going to go on for all, all that time? I have the sworn testimony, which I'll get to you guys, because I'm a, you know, documents guy. I'd be happy to help John when he can't find stuff. I have sworn testimony under oath on the stand in court from the state's leading hurricane evacuation modeler, the guy that oversees all of those things in the state, saying, as an afterthought of his testimony, that the single-county evacuation model is unrealistic. Then we asked him, well, he ran the model in 2014 and discovered that somebody had deleted 6,100 vehicles out of the study. When he reran the, with all the vehicles in there, that our real evacuation rate in 2014 and since is 26.5 hours, two and a half hours in violation of state law, which is 24. Then we asked him if he'd ever run a simultaneous four-county evacuation, which is the realistic thing that's going to happen. And to our surprise, he said, "Yes, he had." Well, you know, he hadn't ever published it. And under oath on the stand, we asked him, "What's our real, realistic, multi-county, simultaneous hurricane evacuation time?" And he said, "About 35 hours." We are 11 hours in violation of state law and have been for many years, and now the state is talking about pulling the plug and let us just build however much we want to. And they're arbitrarily picking the, in 2012, we did all these studies, all the governance and so forth, and he said, "Okay, there's 3,550 units left before we're at carrying capacity in the Florida Keys, and it's supposed to be over, as we've been all discussing." And now they're saying, "Well, we'll just do 3,550 again, since we did it once before." No, that was supposed to be carrying capacity. It's supposed to be it, to safeguard those of us who already live here and families who already live here. They just pulled the plug on all the controls, and it's based on this, what's going to someday be a fatally distorted and flawed evacuation model. Do you remember the terrible weather we had a couple of weeks ago? All of a sudden, winds got almost up to hurricane-force winds. I have a photograph, I'll send you, of the seaweed embedded in the chain-link fence in the southern part of the 18-mile stretch, up to and over the top of the fence. A bunch of the fence was down. Couple of days later, they had, they had upwards of 20 flatbed trailers with big equipment frantically scraping up all the seaweed before the newspapers got it, and, you know, and the tourism... You spend a lot of public money doing that, and it makes a fraud, a public fraud of the Keys evacuation model. By the time the winds were hurricane-force, there was two, three feet of seawater on the 18-mile stretch.
Thank you, Captain Ed. Yeah, I, we went over, I let you, I let you keep on going too, so, thank you. Okay, who's next, Marnie?
Van Cadenhead. Van Cadenhead.
Van Cadenhead, Alamoada, good evening. The Florida Commerce, which is the replacement of the DEO and the DCA and whatever, they just keep switching names, but they do appear not to recognize the fact that this is an area of critical state concern, which is the reason that we had that carrying capacity study, which has been roundly ignored for however many years. So, I follow behind Captain Ed with his warning about what's gonna happen when the, when the rubber meets the road, 'cause it's all based on, on fraudulent reporting from the Tomorrow, if you're available, I hope you will attend the Monroe County Commission meeting at the Murray Nelson Center at nine o'clock, because at 11:30, time certain, they're gonna discover, discuss the CEMEX project. Now, Alamoada is concerned at the hip with the CEMEX project, due to the fact that Alamoada has established now, in our grasp, 300 affordable housing unit permits from the state. So the county wants, more specifically Bart Smith and Tapino, want 86 of our 300 affordable housing permits for that project. And I say to you now, this is not Tavonier, this is not Monroe County, this, three, these 300 units are very valuable to Alamoada, and if you do anything with them, they should be put into a bank for dismissing takings claims and used as administrative relief. If we, if we can deal with 300 cases of takings with those permits, then they will do Alamoada some good. They will do Alamoada no good to let a private entity, a corporation, you know, Tapino from Key West wants to come in and build the Publix and 86 of our affordable housing units. Well, I just don't see the logic in it, I don't see how it's good in any way for the people of Alamoada, and if you talk to the people in Tavonier, they don't want Alamoada's interference in, in overblowing Tavonier. I first moved to Tavonier in 1957, and it's a beautiful little town, I know a lot of people there, a lot of my growing up grew, happened there, and there's too many people there now, there's too much traffic there now, they've just had to put in the Burton stoplight right where they wanna put this project. So, I hope that you...
Wrap it up, man.
Okay, wrapping it up, quickly, Mr. Mayor, I hope I see some of you up there tomorrow morning, and I hope some of you speak with some of the same passion that Captain Ed and I do. Thank you very much.
Marnie, who's next, please?
Tom Raffinello.
Tom Raffinello, Alamoada. Just to, to let you on to what Van said, I believe that Bart Smith says he had a deal with Roger. As far as I'm concerned, that deal is gone. I don't see why you have to honor it. Let me, let me just say this, I think you, I enjoy most of you guys, but I think you made mistakes. On mission, to protect the residents' rights to quiet enjoyment of life, to plan for and enhance our village character, to preserve our community, its people, natural resources, and pride, to provide the basic services of support and quality of life. The key to this is residents. I am absolutely, I don't wanna use the word, but this board, at a five to zero proposition, passed a limited public comment statute. I have to tell you what I think about it. I think it insults, disrespects every resident in this entire village. I think it's tone deaf, I think it's elitist, and I think it's arrogant. Why would you possibly wanna do that? Because you were elected by us to represent us. Why would you tell us you don't wanna hear from us? Why would you limit when we talk? Why would you do something like, in the essence, in the essence of saving time? You wanna save some time? Limit each of you to three to five minutes like they do in the US Congress, you'll save hours. Whoever planted this idea with you deserves to apologize to you for this. This is not helping us at all. It makes you look small. I, I would urge you to repeal this or modify it as soon as possible. Most of your agenda items, and that's what set me off, most of them require, they beg public comment. If, if the mayor didn't give a dispensation, we wouldn't have spoken to the baseball field because we weren't allowed to. How ridiculous is that? This needs to be a team effort, and you know what? We're part of the team. We wanna give you guidance so you can send your contractors off knowing what we want, not what they want. There is a right time to make it, and the time is now. It saves little or no time. I've listened to 20-minute soliloquies from people on this board, and limit your time to three to five minutes, and you'll see how much time you save. Again, Congress does it, it works for them. I, I don't have much else, I just wanna say that it's noticeable that the coordination between the staff and the village council needs a tremendous amount of improvement. Nobody should be working on anything for two years of this significance that you aren't well-versed in. And that goes with anything that we spoke to today. I wanted to comment on the wastewater of people, I wasn't allowed to. I, I just, I think you're missing a ball, and I think a lot of you wanna be re-elected, and this is not gonna help you. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Who's next, Marnie?
Joe Wishmeyer.
Mr. Mayor and council, tonight I would like to explain the difference between theory and reality. One example, in theory, the wastewater audit was supposed to ease concerns that taxpayer dollars were spent properly according to repairs in quotes. In reality, some repairs seem not to have been completed and were charged more than the original quote. For instance, Columbus Drive has been reported to this council at many previous meetings, and yet not checked out visually by the auditors. Another example, in theory, let's have two council meetings a month so that we can hear more important items and have shorter meetings. In reality, there is only one meeting a month, just spread out over two nights. Also, special call land use meetings keep getting canceled and added to the second night of the regular council meeting, just like tonight. An agenda that has 30 tabs, 690 pages to consider, yet the December 7th special call land use meeting was added to the meeting tonight. Even so, there's no mention of that in the agenda about the land use. Where, while all council members seem to agree that land use regulations need to be updated, these meetings keep getting canceled, but no wake zones, no swim areas, boat ramps, council procedures, et cetera, keep getting heard over and over again. You need to get your priorities straightened out. Let's talk about the interviews for a new manager. Most of us have had many job interviews or conducted them in our lives. Have you ever had or given out questions in advance? Even though council members approved three questions, most had no idea about the quote dysfunctional paragraph that was read before question three, airing our dirty laundry throughout the country. How unprofessional is that? Interviews were conducted on November 14th, but you could not set aside three days to meet with the finalists until mid-January, but you expect them to keep their lives in limbo until it is convenient for you. Put yourself in their position. If you were a fully qualified professional applying for a job where you would have to relocate your entire family, how long would you wait to take a position with a quote dysfunctional council who cannot find time to meet with you in a timely manner? Good luck. Lastly, we'd like 30, 30 tabs plus additional discussion items. Letting residents speak with only 10 items does not seem very public. It almost is bordering on dictatorship. As far as even like the hurricane evacuation, I sat through some of those meetings. Some of theirs, they don't even include Key West, what they said was the biggest city in that evacuation plan. I hope you take that into mind. And the last thing was to Mr. Quick, I remember him stating at a meeting that we could not give our affordable housing to the CEMEX property. I hope that is still the case. Thank you.
Thank you. Marnie, anybody else?
Yes, we have Alina Davis, followed by Sue Miller, and then Don Horton.
Alina Davis, Plantation Key. Just following up on what was stated about the additional building permits, as I understand it, our water capacity to come down the pipeline is like 250 million or 25 million gallons a day, I don't remember exactly what figure. And I understand that we exceeded that capacity this past winter two or three times, at least that we know of. So that should be taken into consideration when we're talking about future building permits as well. I would like to encourage the village council to give us, the citizens who elected you, more opportunity for public comment during village meetings. When the village was first formed, there was a large turnout for village meetings. We felt that our opinions mattered. Today, it seems that there are more matters on the agenda that do not allow for public comment. Please give this some thought, as there are a lot of very intelligent people in this village. Thank you.
Thank you, Alina. Who's next, Alina? I mean, Alina, I'm sorry. Marnie?
Sue Miller.
Sue Miller, Lower Matocumbe. You cannot have government off the people, by the people, and for the people if the people don't know what the government is doing. Transparency is critical. Communication builds trust. Without it, we end up with continual frustration, disputes, division, and dysfunction. Councilman Rosenthal used to always remind us about his philosophy, the importance of sitting down at the kitchen table to talk things out before decisions are made. This room is Alamoada's kitchen table. But too often, public feels they aren't wanted here. You discuss critical issues that could impact our lives forever, but prohibit public comment during too many of your critical discussions. Tonight's agenda provides numerous examples of that. The public rarely feels any confidence that our ideas and opinions are ever considered. This community has so many really caring, intelligent people with a variety of skills, knowledge, and expertise. People that love Alamoada and wanna make certain it is always the best it can be. You owe it to your constituents to encourage citizen involvement, have the workshops you've promised, provide direction for committees, and then listen to the results. I'm happy to see that you're gonna provide status reports and financial reports. Fix the meeting policy that greatly thwarts public comment. It seems useless to sit through these marathon meetings. With the current limitations imposed on the public, many of us feel like talking to a brick wall would be more beneficial than showing up at a council meeting. Please change this. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Who's next? Marnie, Don Horton?
Don Horton.
Good evening, Don Horton, Plantation Key, it's Gunnar Bay Road. I, I've just sat here and listened to a whole bunch of people up at public comment saying that there's no public comment, and many of them actually exceeded their three minutes or their five minutes to abuse their public comment, that they had a public comment time for. So, I, I don't, I mean, there, we can email each one of you, we can call each one of you, we've got a time that we can come up here and we can speak, and there are times when the mayor, and which, congratulations, Mayor Pender, and congratulations Sharon, and, and thank you Elizabeth for asking for public meetings on things that are very important to this community. And thank you, Marnie, for starting this just for you, I think it's awesome, and I think our staff is doing good, and I just sit here and I listen to these meetings, and I listen to the public beat up on all of y'all, and, and it's all nonsense. But next, I would like to say, when we get to the point to where the state is going to give us more permits, take them all. Take every one of them. And I'm not saying use every one of them, I'm not saying allocate every one of them i- in a year, or two years, or five years, or even 10 years. But don't miss the opportunity, because there's a lot of those elephants in the room, those houses that aren't recognized, that we're gonna have to recognize sometime or another. There's a lot of mother-in-law apartments, so to speak, that are not recognized, that we're gonna need to recognize. There are still more affordable housing units that we need, we're way behind, we failed dramatically on building affordable housing units in this community. And we can, we can write our own regulations. The state isn't going to hand us permits and say you have to issue them all. And we don't need to talk about, the sky is going to fall if we own them and we issue them as we want to. So, thank you all for your service and what you're doing tonight, and I'm sorry that you have to listen to five people abuse their time at the three minutes and, and still have to beat up on you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Alright, Marnie, anybody else?
No, sorry, that's it.
Okay, public comment is now closed then? This was general public comment. So, Carolyn, I believe you're coming up to, for Parks and Rec?
I get to be the happy side, hopefully. A little bit of smiling and looking out at this great park, and the very first meeting of the new Parks and Rec Committee met on the 15th of November, and the, there are four returning members, actually, three of us were here, Alina, Richie Russell, and I have been here, Dr. John Weir is a returning member, and then there's seven other members who are listed here, I don't wanna take the time, but they're listed that are committee members. We had a very extensive meeting, a part of it was related to the topics we've already talked about relating to the baseball field, just airing lots of the information, but I will say the parks director, Maria, and their staff gave an outstanding, excellent, complete review of this whole park facility. Everything that is done, all the things that the park staff does, the opportunities that are here, they did a really excellent job. And at some time, I think it's something that the public would really appreciate seeing, because all of us know this to be our, our rock star golden place, but I don't think we realize what goes on behind it. There were conversations, we reviewed, there's, there's no actual new stuff, there are some budgeting issues from capital outlays, redoing the beach playground with an ADA, ADA-inclusive facility, doing things with some of the solar lights and redoing some of the park surfaces, but mostly just updating existing facilities. And, and of course, right now, we've got, going on right outside, we've got the dance program, and, and then of course, we've got the upcoming events, and anybody who was here for Holiday Fest, I just think it's great for us to be able to celebrate what this park is, and what it does with our community and all the activities and people being engaged, it's just a, it's a real tribute to what goes on around here. Other things that are coming up on the 30th of December is our laser light show for New Year, so instead of fireworks, it'll be laser lights. And then of course, there are other coming events, the Beats on the Bay and so on, but I wanna, I wanna do three other acknowledgements. One of them is, this is the weekend that the fire truck goes through the village, so I think that's just a great community activity. I wanna give acknowledgement for our pool, because there were a number of people, including Councilwoman Elizabeth, who swam 24 miles in 24 hours in this pool over here. One of our locals, Captain Rob Dixon, did the entire thing solo, and that means, starting at nine o'clock in the morning, swimming an hour, every single hour on the hour, including two o'clock in the morning and everything. And Elizabeth was part of a team... And Elizabeth was part of a team that did the whole thing. I volunteered on the side to be used as an alternative, so I put a little bit of time in for that. But just some of the fun things that go on around here, I think, are fun to celebrate. And the last one is really a village thing. And that is, do we realize that we have a CNN hero living in this village right across the street? And that is Mike Goldberg was recognized as one of 10 CNN heroes. That is a global award. That isn't just like local. That is a global award from what he has done contributing to eye care. And I just think those are things that we can all celebrate as part of our, being a part of the village. So any questions or comments? We meet again 17th of January, I think.
You are cute as a button in that outfit.
Ho, ho, ho!
And you are always so positive and you're informative and just a ray of sunshine. I love listening to your reports.
Well, thank you. I get to represent the park.
It is.
That ought to be happy for everybody.
And I wish everybody would be like that when they come up there.
Well, listen, we've got issues that all need to be dealt with and I-
I appreciate you.
-get to be the representative of things that I think we can all celebrate together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carolyn, I say the same thing. You are always, you're bringing the holiday spirit here. Just when I walked in the room, there you are with your hat and your ho, ho, ho shirt.
My Laplandis hat actually came from the North Pole.
Oh, wow. Wow. So anyways, thank you and thank, I call the park the crown jewel. I mean, I think Alamo Rada is the crown jewel of the Keys. But I think this park, I mean, you see the people, everybody at night when I've walked through here, the young kids walking with their parents and just everybody's connected.
Holiday decorations, all of the things that I think we get to celebrate. So, thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. All right. Deb Gillis, LPA report?
Deb Gillis, I didn't get to bring my ho, ho hat tonight, sorry. So I'm reporting on our November the 13th meeting. We had six of our seven members. It was our first meeting after the new committee. We voted in a chair, myself, and a vice chair, Lori Lalanne, again. We, I'm going to keep this short because you've got plenty of things on your agenda. We had an ordinance in front of us, art in public places that we asked to be tabled and reworked by staff. It included a lot of public, I'm sorry, private residential and commercial projects within it. Everybody at the table thought it was supposed to be governmental side of it and the government side of it, but it's being reworked. We had, and that was voted to table at six to zero. We had administrative relief procedures, which is, I think, is in front of you tonight on plating. This is more of a housekeeping that, somewhere along the way, that it was being approved at county but not necessarily getting approved through the village. And we just solidified, we agreed that it should be solidified, that they have to have village approval to do plating work. And the third item that we had on our agenda was a zoning in progress. It's kind of a housekeeping item, too. I think it's a great item in that when you are working on some kind of moratorium or a zoning change, it automatically, once you've had first read on that item, it automatically puts a zoning in progress in place so that people are put on notice that the rules are working on being changed. So we thought that was a good idea, too. And that was a six to zero vote also. We had a meeting last night. I'm just going to go ahead and report that because it was a, just a training meeting, not just, but just a training meeting. We had no items to vote on, and it was a great meeting put on by the lawyers, and we thank you for doing that. Not that one, but we had three others, or two other guys with us last night. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Any questions for Deb? All right, thank you, Deb. Do we, would we like to take a break for five minutes?
We need a break.
Huh?
Our streaming is giving us trouble.
Okay, need a break? Okay, so we're going to take a break for five minutes. Thank you.
Back to order, now our streaming's working and, okay. So we are moving on to Mayor Council Communications and Councilman Rosenthal is up about discussion with the fills.
Okay, thank you. I first would like to acknowledge the captain for putting up the signs in relation to the Christmas decorations, south and north, so the public can participate in riding through the, our thing here. Investigating where we were on the fills, some names popped up, names I was not familiar with. One was the name of Sharon, Sharon Calder with the DOT, and she's with MGI Inc. And the May twenty twenty-four was a very important date with her. The DOT has a project manager, Monica Rodriguez, who I'd never heard of, but there is a project. And the project concerns mile marker seventy-five point two to eighty-four point forty-four. So once I got investigating what's going on here, I wrote out an update as to where we are. The beginning date of the leases in twenty nineteen is a five-year lease ending in nine, ten, twenty-four. Nine months from now, and we've never really discussed that. We can renew the lease for another five-year term if we notify the FDOT one hundred twenty days in advance. We have had four years and two months of orange cones and spent approximately a million dollars. A hundred million dollars for CPH for a master plan. A hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year for four years for Public Works, including another hundred per year in overtime pay, which I really was not in favor of. Overtime pay in the budget says you're gonna use it. Why advertise it before you use it? I can't blame Public Works for two hundred thousand dollars. I can't blame the fire department for five hundred thousand dollars, I believe, in overtime, because it's there to be used. But it adds up to a million dollars. The council decided after a public workshop six months ago that the village would keep the fills a road, not a park. The council then approved paying CPH to update the master plan previously created to eliminate all amenities and provide a rope and wood post barrier to restrict parking. But our lease starts eighteen feet from the highway. That's not from the center line, it's the side of the highway. And when you do that, if we put up wood posts and a rope barrier eighteen feet back, would it prevent parking in the meantime? No problem, but the DOT might have a plan that will. I discussed it with them, I'm not too sure about the plan. DOT has a project underway. They contracted with a landscaping company, WGI, once again, that's pertinent, of Fort Lauderdale, to landscape Seo's Beach north to mile marker eighty-one, including the fills. The project also mentions installing a wood barrier. In November twenty twenty-two, WGI provided fifty-seven-page document with a survey and details of the new plants to be used, along with existing plants. Charts show how many plants are included. I won't name all the plants, but it comes to four thousand two hundred and thirteen plants that are planned. Apparently, the DOT learned last week that there is a conflict with a portion of the property that are landscaping with the FKAA Pipeline Installation. Imagine that, we haven't talked about that. And so instead of starting their landscaping project in May twenty-four to, for five months from now, as planned, they will be delaying the start of the work until April of twenty twenty-five. With that much newer vegetation on the fills, perhaps we need to rethink our wood post, rope plan. Perhaps we need better coordination with the FKAA and certainly with FDOT. I made a call to Stacy Miller, who runs Area Six for the DOT, and I asked her, how do we get rid of the stanchions, the orange things, and the rope and all that? She said, well, we have to have another projection from the, whatever they're called, and a whole deal, and that will take months in advance to do anything. So we just continued to go on and on and on, like we do so many projects. So many projects that are pointed up to us at these meetings, and they don't materialize. So now here we are with the fills, and we're put off till twenty twenty-five before anything's gonna happen. The one thing I accomplished was that the survey that we've been using is not necessary to do it again. It's recent enough that whatever we wanna do, and from here on out, we do not have to pay for that survey. I told Ed, when he was manager, to sign the contract. We hadn't even signed the contract for this outfit to go forward. It wound up on his desk one morning, and he looked at it, he didn't know where it came from. I know where it came from, it's not necessary to mention names. But again, a delay. So I just wanna bring you up to date as to where we are, and what you can expect. And it looks like we're gonna have to live with it for some time to come. I've been after this project for a couple of years, for sure. I have to acknowledge the lady to my left to bring it up with the new council. I was really dead with the old council, that's for sure. I made no progress whatsoever, exception of the man sitting to my right. He acknowledged the fact that something had to be done. However, he didn't have any answers. But at least he got that far. He was the only one that did. And here we are. So just prepare yourself, it's gonna be a long hike. So that's what I have to report, unfortunately. If you would like to add to it, by all means do that.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Um, I had somebody in the community contact me about a suggestion. And I don't know if we can do this without the DOT's permission or anybody's permission, but, you know, we wanna keep it, in my view, natural-looking and what's natural. I was sick this weekend, and yet people were sending me videos of the fills, where here are two of our trucks parked on each side of the fill, yet there's people double-parked swimming. People are still parking there, and they're still doing whatever they wanna do. And I know we spent a ridiculous amount of overtime, which, why don't we, I know somebody who could get boulders, and they're not bad-looking, we can utilize them, ever, if we put a boulder right there, every five feet down the fills, no one's gonna pull in anywhere and put up some signs that say two hundred dollar fine if you're caught, trying to park. And then when we do have the design and whatever, those rocks or boulders can be utilized somewhere else on the property, or we can redo them, but I, what is to stop us right now from doing something like that, that'll get rid of the cones? It'll get rid of the overtime, and it'll stop people from pulling in, there won't be anywhere to pull in. And this came from one of our residents, who every weekend sends me a picture of us doing nothing and people launching skiffs and whatever at the fills, and so we know it's not working. And he said, suggested the boulders. And I think it's a pretty good thought, because when we do landscape, those boulders could be put together maybe, or placed for, get pictures taken or whatever, but they're natural, it's not gonna block the view, and it could stop some of the problems right now and get rid of the cones. So there's, there's my suggestion.
I agree with you, however, in order to make any
Changes.
Changes, it has to go to the DOT.
District Six.
And they're gonna require a professional outlay of what we wanna do. They won't, they, we cannot do anything on our own.
Well, just, can we shortcut that in any way, John? I mean, there has to be a solution.
I, I think you're required to, I, I don't have the, the agreement in front of me, but I believe, my recollection is, Henry, is correct, and I don't think there's a way around it that we would have to.
Can't fast-track it?
I, I mean, we could expedite it on our end, but we would have to get them the documents and information sufficient to, to meet what they feel is required.
Can I draw a picture on a napkin with a bunch of X's as bold?
No, it has to be a, uh,
I know.
Unfortunately.
I know, I'm just being facetious.
I know.
John, it's gotta be an engineer.
Yeah.
I mean, she said it, I've worked for FDOT, they gotta have an engineer in drawing.
Yep.
Doesn't matter if it's boulders, what the rope Henry's talking about, it's all, it's gotta go through their engineering process.
Well, what happens if twenty twenty-five isn't acceptable? I mean, we just supposed to sit here and do nothing? And, I don't know.
Well, what we're hanging, what the DOT is hanging their hats on, Rick, now, is the pipeline.
Yeah, they're
Well, that can, that doesn't mean we have to put something inexpensive to stop the people from going, it can be moved.
Just picking up the things and putting up signs, no parking.
Signs aren't gonna do it, after what I saw this weekend. It's not, you need to physically stop the cars from getting, to be able to pull over.
Only way you can physically stop it is
My boulders.
Is the two or three guys, guys that we're paying overtime to, that are just sitting there with their radios on and who knows what.
I've got all the videos on my phone.
And once again, I say, to plug in overtime into the budget is the wrong thing to do.
Listen, I'm not arguing with you on that, cuz I have the videos to show where our guys are sitting in trucks, and people are swimming and launching kayaks, and these are residents who are sending me these videos, so it's not like it's me doing it. So I understand.
Oh, that's it.
I'd like to ask a question for John, please. Since the pipeline is, is causing a disruption of the schedule and the landscaping, would it be possible if the council gives direction to inquire of the DOT if we could put boulders or something similar as a temporary measure during the construction of the pipeline, so that in the event that they needed to be moved, someone could just grab them with a piece of equipment and move them out of the way? They could be stacked up or piled up or whatever. But that would give us some relief from the cones and other things. Without having to go through an expensive drawing, we could just specify, you know, three-to-five-foot boulders or whatever.
My boulders.
The thing is, we have a contract with the DOT, and in that contract is very specific. Any change has to be a code-cade by the DOT. I don't care what it is, it has to be.
Get that answer from John, I know that was directed, or Maria?
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly inquire. I mean, I think they would have to sign off on it, we could, we could inquire and we could lobby them to, to, to make an exception for us as a result of this.
Thank you, Mark.
We could do that, I mean, I think we, you know, Maria raised a point about potential liability, we could look into that as well.
AJ would be with Maria would be
Boulders are gonna cost money, too.
Well, what happens if we have somebody who may supply them?
You know, you don't just
Yeah, but that makes up for the overtime.
Somebody will buy them when we're done, or we could use them for
A hundred percent.
We could use them on the doggone jetty back here.
A hundred percent. I mean, to me, the overtime we're spending for getting nothing for the overtime, and I'm sorry, I'll show you the videos from this weekend, it's ridiculous. And so the money we save in overtime can buy a boulder.
Well, John,
It's a thought.
If you need direction, please inquire as to what we can do in the shortest amount of time with the least amount of paperwork, et cetera, et cetera. If you could do that, unfortunately.
Do you want John to do that, or do you want whoever your manager is to do that?
Whoever is, you guys decide between you.
It's the manager, probably AJ, cuz AJ has a relationship with him.
Right.
Yeah, I would suggest
I'll get with AJ and
I'm just suggesting a temporary, these are temporary improvements that, that, I know our contract says permanent ones have to be approved, but this is temporary during a construction project by another agency that's outside of our control, and it's impacting our enjoyment, or whatever you would call it, our use of the property that we contracted with them for.
Yeah, I would suggest that the direction be that we go through the manager's office, I work with the manager as part of that process. And then I think that the staff, we can, we can get that, we can reach out and we can see if we can make it happen.
Okay.
If it, you know, if I'm hearing head nods or seeing head nods from
I think we're all in agreement, yeah.
This can be started or done or et cetera prior to the new manager. We're not gonna wait for the new, new manager.
Yeah, I mean with Maria, the manager's office, yeah.
Maria, okay, that's fine.
Just so I understand, council's direction, what we were having CPH do was come up with new design plans to eliminate the parking areas on the fills.
Right.
So are these boulders, you don't want it, you want them where the parking currently is?
All the way down.
So there's no parking, you just want them all the way down?
So are we gonna remove them?
Prohibit the parking, one hundred percent.
And this is to get rid of the cones and
And the barricades.
Yes.
Just to have boulders or something?
Yep.
Five, five to zero, we approve, no parking around the middle.
Right.
So these would be like natural, these would be natural barricades? I mean, they'd be natural entities, but be utilized as a barricade to prevent parking?
Oh, I think it makes total sense.
The problem you're gonna be faced with is the state-owned property before it gets to us. And we're talking about eighteen feet. So you have to acknowledge the fact that people are going to park in that eighteen feet unless the state does something on their end.
I find it hard to believe.
Doesn't get to our end
No.
For eighteen feet. Doesn't get to our end for 18 feet.
Or allows us to put something in the state, uh, on the state land.
Yeah, because Henry, you're, you're on the side of the road. No one's gonna pull them between the side of the road and a boulder and take the risk of opening the door into traffic.
You wanna bet on it?
Well, I mean, come on. Well
And they'll roll the boulders out of the way if you, if you don't put them there securely. I've seen it happen.
Well, can we at least look into, at least it's a suggestion and a solution?
So Maria, let's, between you and AJ, John needs to get involved, yeah.
Just inquire, I mean, it's a, it's a temporary construction thing.
Please move forward on it, that's all I ask.
So is that gonna go on our after action?
I have AAF right there.
Alright, alright.
Man, you got, you, Maria, you hit Elizabeth's hot button with that action item thing. Okay, alright, so
Can we do that, could, could we know that? So, sorry, just one quick question on that. In order to not revisit this again in another three months, can we just find this information out within the next month? Like by our next meeting, it's just a quick, cuz it's really a question, it's not, it's just a, an inquiry. It's not anything more, it's not like getting them in place, but could it be done before next month?
Of course.
Really? Okay, cool, great, super.
Okay. Alright, Henry, you got something else?
Just, just a, just a comment, we were talking about people abusing the privilege with the three minutes or the five minutes, what have you. I ran a meeting in relation to this, as a matter of fact. I did not time anybody. And I allowed people to come to, to the microphone more than once. That meeting ran extremely well. Nobody abused the privilege, nobody. I'm not saying we've changed our policy, I'm not saying that, but in that respect, that meeting, I don't know, it's probably a couple hours, I don't know. But nobody abused the privilege of speaking more than once and exceeding the time, which would, if I kept the time, exceed, exceeding the three minutes and then even you didn't exceed the time. I took note of it. I just want to see that for the hell, because it's such, I kinda thought it was kinda neat, thank you.
Thanks, Henry. Okay, so, uh, let's move on to B then. And, uh, John, about the nearshore water citizens advisory regarding Tavernier Creek idle speed zone?
This is actually
Have seven?
I, I see in the notes, but it's actually Peter.
Okay.
Good evening, council. So the nearshore water regulations citizens advisory committee has been discussing an extension of the Tavernier Creek idle speed zone. And that's due to safety concerns. If I can have you look at the map we're showing, it's actually being shown back here. Uh, what's shown in yellow, that's the current extent of the idle speed zone through Tavernier Creek. Uh, what's shown in red there, that is a proposed extension of the idle speed zone. And as you could see in red there, you could see there's that S-turn there. Um, boats travel through this creek at very high rates of speeds, that becomes essentially like a blind turn. I have confirmed with sheriff's office, there have been numerous boating accidents in this location. Uh, so this proposal would take the idle speed zone out to the mouth of the Florida Bay or somewhere close to the mouth of Florida Bay. Uh, you heard from committee chair Diane Harbaugh, she recommended that council direct staff to look into an extension such as this. Uh, council wanted this on the agenda for tonight, so I have started looking into it. And staff is looking for direction on whether you not, whether or not you want staff to move forward with working with the agencies that have jurisdiction here to extend the idle speed zone, so.
Absolutely. I, I mean, in my rec- reckless, younger days, we used to waterski like morons through Tavernier Creek. We did. I mean, we did, which was crazy. And then you idle to a certain, and then everybody guns it around that corner. And not only the waves going up on the people's houses, it is a dangerous, dangerous area. And I agree a hundred percent that we need to look into that and I approve it myself, so.
I, I feel the same way, I had the pleasure of going through there in a slow boat two Saturdays or two Sundays ago. And, and I go through there from time to time, but, uh, right on the, the bottom side of Tavernier Creek is a business that rents paddle boards and, um, uh, canoes and kayaks and things like that. And so there's people traveling at a very slow pace and they go, they'll naturally just want to go to the end. And then soon as that goes from yellow to red, it's all four throttles down and the four engines and those giant boats and a giant wake. And it's hazardous, it is a blind corner, it's just a matter of time before something very, very bad happens. So I, I think this is a good idea and I think we should move forward.
It already did happen, Mark, the lady at the post office Tavernier, her son and her son's girlfriend were on a wave runner and they, a boat went by and pushed them, I mean, they got hurt pretty bad.
Well, you could see the places in the mangroves where boats have run up in there and had, you know, problems because they have to avoid an oncoming, you know, speeding boat. And then, you know, in the middle of the afternoon when people have been at the sandbar and had a little much to drink, it's, it's a bad situation.
Elizabeth, you have any comment on that?
Sounds like we're in agreement, let's, thank you, Pete.
Alright, so we can move on with that?
That could go on our report, right?
Mr.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask, uh, one, uh, for one additional directive related to the fills at Tab six? Um, just, John, I mean, we are, we do have Keys Day coming up in January that a number of us are flying up for. Uh, I've been in contact with our lobbyists to set up meetings with legislators, the governor's office, as well as departments, the DOT being one. Um, uh, I think it would be a good idea if we include the fills as an agenda item with any meeting with the DOT. Uh, as long as the council's okay with that, I can specify with our lobbyists that that's an item that we would like to discuss while we're up there. Okay, thank you.
Are you dealing with Ryan or Joseph?
Both of them.
Okay, alright, okay. Or should I say Dean Cannon, I mean, we don't talk to Dean as much, but
Alright.
Yeah, okay, alright. Let's, uh, move on to C, discussion regarding kayak launching at Vacaville, vacant village land, uh, property. Vice Mayor Mahoney.
Um, Peter, I think you had something to do with the Audubon Society and the property in my neighborhood that everybody's launching stuff at. So, come on up, come on up, pal. Um, okay, here's, here's my concern and is that Jerry is my next door neighbor, so I know him very well. He does a great job for this thing, birds, I can't, yeah, I can't tell you how much, and they do need a place. When I heard that you, we, they went into a contract already for a year, I talked to John and he said, "Well, that's okay, they can be asked to leave in 10 days' notice." I don't want to do that to them. But that's tying up the Machado property for two years and I don't want to hurt either option cuz that could be affordable housing, so. I had another one of my brainstorms besides the boulders. Um, why can't we offer them Green Turtle Hammock Park to put their boats at? And that way they'll never get kicked out, we can look at the Machado property for affordable housing, which is another thought. And then we don't have to put an expensive gate up, which I heard everybody, cuz I wanted a gate. And everybody, "A gate, that's expensive." But I watch people drive in now and park on the side there and use that, which is supposed to be just for the Audubon Society. So would that be an option to let the Audubon Society go to Green Turtle Hammock and keep their boats?
Are you talking about the dock, the boat base?
Yes, I am, Mayor.
Well, so the village did put out a request for proposals two, two or three years ago now for an offer profit group to be housed, house themselves, use that as a home base, the Green Turtle Hammock. Uh, we only had one applicant for that, it was not the Audubon Society, it was Florida Bay Forever
I'm aware.
Who is currently using the area. So I don't know how that would work, could we allow another one? Could we have an agreement with Audubon judge for that area? I mean, that could be something you guys discuss.
I don't see why multiple 501(c)(3)'s cannot utilize a park. I, I, that to me has baffled me, cuz I know Florida Forever, I think, is who you guys put in there. I don't think they really even utilize it that much. And this would be, why couldn't we all play in the same sandbox and solve all kinds of problems by, they need a place where they don't have to worry about being kicked out in 10 days' notice if the Machado property all of a sudden becomes available. I don't know how everybody else feels about it, but I, I don't see why two, two, three, four, five people can't utilize something that we own, that we pay the bills for and that benefits multiple causes down here. Just my thought.
Say, Vice Mayor, that's a great idea, but for convenience, I know the Audubon folks pretty well. As you know, that, the docks there at the Machado property is very close to their office. And it's also much closer to their research, the research location. So it would be an inconvenience for them to have to be housed that far down in Upper Matta Comby. Now, if costs were an issue, of course, you know, they would look somewhere else. But I think for now, if they have the opportunity to be docked there, they're gonna use that, cuz it's so much more convenient.
Of course, but to me, we're now saying that we're not gonna touch that property for two years. And to me, that's sort of, we know affordable housing is a big issue. We know that property belongs to us and it is already, I guess, pegged to be affordable housing. To me, I would think I would rather have a place where I know I'm safe and secure than us saying, okay, we're not gonna put anything there for two years. To me, I, I just, to have a place for free for the Audubon Society, to me evens out the drive. And that's just me, I don't know how everybody else feels.
Well, Peter, I, I got a question. The times I've driven through Green Turtle Hammock, there, is there any boats there at all in the marina? Cuz any, anytime I've gone there, I've never seen.
No, no, some of the livaboards will come in on their dinghies, stop and go, you know, off for the day, you know, in, on town. Uh, so those are the only boats there, there's no boats being docked there right now.
Peter, aren't we going to do some construction there pretty soon?
Good, good point, so yes, we will be starting, hopefully, starting construction in January on the basin there. So, I mean, that's only gonna be a three-month project, so, I mean, in the short term, we wouldn't want to start anything like this because the basin will be closed. But, you know, within a few months, hopefully, we'll be back open there. I'm curious though about where, where these people are accessing with the kayaks. Is it from the Monroe Drive side, the, the north side or from the airstream side?
Yeah, by Dennis Ward's house.
Okay, so they're walking through private property?
Of course they are, you, you think
And putting kayaks in off the seawall?
Not just kayaks, I've seen, I don't know, I haven't followed them into the woods, I haven't done that yet. But when there's, there's cars and trailers parked along the side, there's people, I don't know what they do in those woods because it's not, I don't know if you've gone back in there, it's not a very well-kept place, I will say that.
It sounds like we need to secure it no matter what.
I had suggested that, but I heard that, uh, someone, I don't know who, said, "No, fence is too expensive." So, I don't know, I'm just throwing out suggestions.
We've talked about this, staff talked about this and we, we said if there was a fence, it would need to go around the whole, all of those lots, the, what we call the Machado lots in the middle and then the other two lots. So for, for the fence to be effective, it would have to go around. So it's not, no, it's too expensive, it was just, it would be expensive. But if council directs you want a fence installed, then that's what we will do. So count, staff certainly didn't already make the determination that we're not gonna put a fence in there.
I didn't understand.
That's the purpose of this discussion item. Separately, we are, uh, there is an ordinance, I believe, is it first reading about trespassing on public?
It's on second reading, actually.
Okay.
Don't be looking at me to run up there and arrest somebody.
In place, we could start with signs that say, "No kayak launching, this is, uh, you know, otherwise it's, uh,"
That's up to you guys, but I think the main question really is, is that do we want to tie up this property for two years? Cuz I don't want to kick them out in 10-day notice. To me, that's, when John told me 10 days, I thought, "That's horrible, they're very important to this community." So I was just trying to find something else that would open up this land for affordable housing, not that I want more houses in my neighborhood, sorry. But, uh, and also give the Audubon a safe place, that, that's all. So it's not just me, as Buddy says, I'm one of five.
Well, we should ask Audubon what their concerns and preferences are, but, uh, it, it sounds like that we're creating a nuisance by allowing people to use that property. And, you know, that's a very sensitive canal to the neighbors that live along there. We, I learned that at our zoning hearing for that and I'll never forget it. So that, 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 that's a, a primary concern is the residents' disruption, uh, their, you know, quiet life along that canal. Uh, I, I think, of course, Audubon respects that and doesn't abuse that, so that's not a problem for them, so.
I mean, it, it sounds like the, the concern is possibly the liability of just people using that property without, that, that, just that liability. I mean, Audubon and every nonprofit is probably thankful for any day they get to use that dock, presumably. Like, that's a gift and we have no plans, you know, right now to, to, um, to use that property. But I think that we've got some, you know, certainly, as soon as there's, we, I mean, are, are there any plans to use that property in the near future?
That's what it was bought for.
Right, but is it on
We're gonna need to talk about that.
We don't even have the 300 units yet.
Mark wanted to use that property, about a few months ago you brought it up, about Gorman, I think.
Well, they had inquired about it, yeah.
Yeah, so I
Yeah, I mean, I think it's legitimate, a legitimate concern. I like the idea of the trespass, no trespassing signs and, and to, to give notice to Audubon that this is a, I mean, they, they should realize that it's a temporary solution for, and it's not really our responsibility to, you know, even though I, we all want Audubon to do their good work. But if we have, if, if this community wants to take ownership for, um, assisting nonprofits, then that is, that's a totally legitimate conversation and we, we have it in our charitable giving conversation. Um, uh, and, and, you know, what a gift for Audubon to use this property right now, I don't, I mean, but they could be given notice for
Sure.
This could change at any time.
Right, absolutely.
So let me ask a question, could we, could we get, we don't have to fence that south property towards the future, but just if you're gonna do what you, y'all were saying, Maria, is that if they fenced the Monroe side?
There's an aerial in the package.
Pardon?
There's an aerial in there.
Right, right.
There's not much detail.
Yeah, so, so that woods is thick there on the Monroe side. But the, the main thing is at the end of that dock, and I mean, I know that the people that live there, cuz my uncle had a trailer there for a long time. Um, they like to walk that dock and walk the back end and then up towards Gottier. Oh, I, I, I don't know, but let's, we could look at some options.
I don't think a, a fence would prohibit people from launching kayaks, cuz there's a bulkhead.
Yeah, it's concrete, right.
You have to put the fence out into the water. And I would guess that what's happening is people aren't actually utilizing the village property, it doesn't really make sense. You know, knowing those properties really well, I'm sure they're walking in through the gap in the Gottier apartments and the fence that's already there and launching off of that private property that's on Monroe. Not getting on the village property cuz they'd have to walk farther.
Oh, no.
I, I imagine that's what's happening, I don't even think they're probably using
What, what if we had Peter and AJ go down there and scope it out?
Yeah.
Point it out, doesn't matter to me.
How about AJ putting a camera up there and we can find out what's what?
Okay.
Okay?
An electric fence.
Signs too, I mean, that's, that's easy, no trespassing signs, I think could help.
So is there any direction?
Oh, geez.
See, we complain about, like, not, we complain about giving direction and nothing happens, so, happening, so
Maria's listening and they're, they, you guys are gonna look into this, I mean, what I just heard.
Well, AJ and Peter can go out and, and look at it onsite, you know, boots on the ground and make some suggestions to us about, first, we don't really understand the exact problem. Is it where it's at, how they're getting there, what, what there might be, maybe we put boulders up, you know? And, cuz we can reuse them, so, hey. I, I mean, I'm on this boulder thing with you, that, that's pretty good.
So you're just gonna check it out and come back with, with what's going on and is that
And there's kids who fish off of there too.
Absolutely, I did, I did call the Audubon folks, I spoke to two of them this morning, they were not aware of any kayaks being launched off of there.
I don't know where kayaks came from, but it's not just kayaks, there's kids fishing off of there. You keep saying kayaks, it's not a kayak launch, it's just, people are u- utilizing that, there's that road that's through there and there were kids fishing off there, so it's not just a kayak launch.
Okay, so Peter, can we, you and AJ observe, are they fishing on Gottier's property or village property? Let's give us an update, can we do that by the, in meeting in January?
Absolutely.
Is that possible, Maria?
Absolutely.
And again, I wasn't trying to make something big out of this, I was just letting you know.
Yeah, it, it is, I mean, I know you're not, it's, okay, can we move on from that then? Let's move on, well, uh, okay, now, discussion regarding timeline for presentation ride share service, Vice Mayor.
Again, um, Maria and I had a conversation about this and, um, we have sort of pushed the ride share, it's out for bid right now. So, um, uh, the committee is going to meet, I think it closes the first or second of January.
Second of January.
And then they're meeting like three or four days after to open the bids. And, uh, they, some of the people on the committee, not everybody, some of the people on the committee wanted to, uh, read the bids and get it for us to make a decision in January. And that might not be doable with only 24 hours. So I told Maria, "Let's talk about you guys at least, if they can get it done and we can look at it." look at it, put it on the January agenda, and if not, we'll pull it and put it in the February, and give people time to read and understand the different companies and what's the best solution for the people in Alamarada. So that's all this is.
But basically, this is a request to make an exception to council procedures with regard to the agenda deadline. That deadline is the Thursday before the Tuesday meeting. So the meeting that the panel will have, as currently planned, is for that Thursday to go over the proposals and hopefully, they'll be able to identify a company to make a recommendation. Staff needs some time to prepare the item, so it may not be until Monday, the 8th, that council would receive the supporting documents to then on Tuesday, consider the recommendation of the panel. So this is an exception to current procedures, and separately, interested proposers have been sending questions to Mary Swainy, and two of them have asked for extensions of the deadline. So that's another aspect, if we want to, if we want to...
I didn't know about that. Surprise, I didn't know about that.
Right, so if council wants to go ahead and try to address this on January 9th, then we would need to tell these firms that, no, we can't give them an extension.
John, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I was just going to let you know that if the council wants to do this, it would require a motion from the council to waive the procedure for this specific item to allow for it to be added on the January 9th outside of the deadline.
Well, now, since Maria, that you're saying that they want to extend the deadline, it's pretty much got to be February then.
If, right, you, these are the proposers asking if there's any possibility of the deadline being extended. And I don't know how many proposers, you know, have looked at the RFQ, of course, or RFP, but two of them so far have asked.
Well, that's, because I only know of three, so that's two out of three.
Is there a compelling reason to do it quickly? Is there a deadline or a funding deadline or something?
Part of the reason is the lovely grant that Maria got, it's January through December. So I was trying to get it in January so we could get her money back, but if we miss a month, we miss a month. I mean, to me, I think we need to make a prudent decision, what's best, and I didn't know about the ask for more time, and that changes my thoughts greatly, that it should just be moved to February, so never mind.
Okay, are we all okay with that?
Yes.
And you know where to put that on her after report?
I don't think we'll have to on that one.
What length of time are we talking about as far as the extension?
As far as the extension that the firms asked for?
Yes.
One of them asked for at least a week, I don't know what the other one asked, where they just asked generally, can the deadline be extended? So if we do target the February meeting, what Mary and I had planned was to confer with the chairperson, Jim Lashley, and see how long he thinks we should extend the deadline.
Okay.
Or if he'd like to call a meeting of the panel and have the panel discuss how long to extend the deadline.
I just think we should just give it to the middle, a couple of weeks in January, let them have their meeting, and it would make our agenda for February, and not, excuse me, not try to push it.
Let's take our time and get it right.
Elizabeth, are you good with that?
Yeah.
Henry?
So we're good?
Okay.
Thank you.
So we're good, okay. So let's move on to the next one, which would be, Mark, Form 6.
Yes, so this is really just for the council members' consideration, but it would have a, has a taxpayer angle to it as well. So in case you're not aware, the legislature changed the financial disclosure laws for elected officials to require a new form, Form 6. About a week ago, the Florida League of Cities held an online seminar, I attended that seminar to try to learn how to do it. I will just tell you in a summary, I don't think of myself as a beginner with this sort of stuff, and I was not interested in doing it on my own at all. It requires, I think, to do it right, and given the sensitivity of it and the accuracy that's required, it requires professional assistance. It's very technical about, you know, capital gains, rental properties, if you own stock, even interest on bank accounts. And it's, you're going to need some help if you have some assets, income liabilities, and that sort of thing. More complicated if you're married or hold assets jointly with other people or have partners. So to that end, I wanted to see if there is interest in the council. I think the county has the similar procedure where they have authorized, I might say this incorrectly, but in essence, the county pays for the professional service that is required by the council members to stay in compliance with the law. And to say it differently, we shouldn't have to pay to stay out of, not out of jail, but out of trouble with the Ethics Commission on a form that is so complicated, and this is the first year that it's being done, so there's a lot, there's a learning curve here, not just for us, but for everyone. So my interest there would be to, number one, to ask to see if the council, if we could approve this so that the council could be reimbursed for that, or we may want to hire a single professional, and there's people that specialize in this kind of a thing. I think the county hires a specific individual and they all use them, that might not be to your liking, and that's fine, we can all go our own way, might be easier if we kind of work together, I don't know, let's talk about that. But that's one aspect of it. The other aspect, which is also very interesting, is this form, this requirement also applies to candidates. And it will become a public record, but only for the candidate that is elected. It does not become public if you're not elected, and it doesn't become a public record for a candidate until the election and they're successful. I also feel that it is only fair to a candidate, anybody who's willing to throw their hat in the ring and brave enough to run for office, they should be able to take, we should be able to support them and encourage them to run for office by reimbursing them for this, it's an onerous task to do this. I'm not criticizing the Ethics Board for requiring it, I'm just saying it's a challenge to get it done and done right. Legislators do this, I mean, it's, I think I know a lot of stuff, but it's way over my head, and I don't want to touch it with a 10-foot pole. So that's my personal opinion, you can look into it if you want to, but if there's interest on the council, if we could perhaps ask John to come up with an ordinance, a resolution, whatever is necessary for that. In relation to that, I wanted to make sure you're aware that, in the same sense that we are required to do this for this financial disclosure, there may come a time, and I hope it never happens, that one of us may be the subject of some kind of a complaint. It could be a criminal complaint, it could be an ethics complaint, it could be a civil claim, you know, suits, I mean, there's a multitude of things that could occur. The county has an ordinance that allows the individual county commissioner to be reimbursed by the county upon their successful defense of a claim of that nature, but it only applies for civil and criminal. That ordinance, that county ordinance, happens to be effective in the village. It is one of the few county ordinances that, when we incorporated and we adopted our own code, the code says, ordinance is not change, a new ordinance is not, that don't change county ordinances get to survive. So that one survives, it's technically part of our code, but it's only for criminal and for civil. I would like that to be included, also ethical, so that anyone who runs for office or wants to run for office, if someone takes a pot shot at them for an improper reason and that is unsuccessful and it's successfully defended, I think that person is entitled to be reimbursed and should have the best defense that they can, they can get for that, because it's only fair, because when you're sitting here, I guess we're in the bullseye, so. With that said, that's the end of my sales pitch on that, and I wanted to see if there's any questions.
Mark, I talked to John about this already, because the county does, I feel we should follow the county's lead. They all have, before they send that, they have to have their form blessed by their attorney in Tallahassee, that they have on retainage solely for that Form 6.
Right, right.
So, I mean, you guys can look it up, you can call David Rice, you can call Holly, Michelle, talk to, I mean, Jim Mooney has to do the same thing. State reps have to do it.
And I wanted to ask, does this apply to the LPA, or is it, they're appointed, I know, but I couldn't make sense of it.
I don't think it does. I think it's just local public officials and certain employees, like the village manager would apply to as well.
Yes, exactly.
I don't believe so. I'm pulling up, if you all recall, I had circulated back in October a PowerPoint that one of my ethics partners put together for you all on this. I'm trying to see if it's in here. I don't believe it applies to boards, I believe it's just the elected.
But clarify, I forgot to mention, it also applies to the village manager.
Yes, it does, it will apply to the village manager.
Yeah, December 31st, if you're the village manager.
If you serve in 2024, this applies to you.
Yep.
So you're asking us to answer two questions. One is, do we want to, we're directing John to create a resolution to, to either, and what we need to decide is either we have someone within the village designated to handle these for us, or we use our own accountants, which might be easier, up to a certain dollar amount.
The county uses an ethics attorney in Tallahassee that specializes in that only?
No, I didn't hear that, sorry. An ethics attorney, but why isn't it an accountant?
Well, I mean, you can get an accountant. It could be, but because there's legal aspects to this that an accountant might not be qualified to address, I personally, having looked at this a little bit, it kind of scared me, I'm going to say that real honestly to you.
The state representatives, Elizabeth, all use, they have attorneys that, like, I asked Jim Mooney about it and Holly about it, and they had attorney, they have attorney, they had attorneys in Tallahassee.
Okay, so an ethics attorney that we're, that's what we're giving direction on?
And I, John, I talked to John about it, and he actually gave me a name of somebody up there that is the top by far, and I, John recommended him, the vice.
I think it's who the county uses, if I remember.
Yeah, they use Mark Herron, yeah.
I guess the first one has kind of two components to it, or two potential options, I guess, we would, I would need direction on one, which I think Elizabeth was getting to, is one, is it an ordinance, would the direction be for me to create an ordinance or a resolution allowing for you all to hire your own person and then get reimbursement for the ethics? And I know there's the second component about the defense, and we'll get to that. Or is it for the council to retain someone so that you all can just reach out to him or her, and it's just on a retainer with the village, and you all can utilize that person for the Form 6?
And it's outside of what's provided.
Yeah, and I think that's, I do think it's important to use somebody outside of the village attorney's office, I do.
I like, I like option two, that's just my preference.
Are we in agreement with that?
Yeah.
There's one thing. If you're intending to run again, you have to announce that by the end of this month. If you're not intending to run again, you're still liable for Page 6.
Form 6.
Form 6, you're still liable for that.
If you're here on the 20th, I mean, yeah, December 31st, if you stay.
Why don't you have to announce you're running now? That's a requirement from the, what's her name, in Key West?
Supervisor of elections?
Joyce, yeah, Joyce. And that was explained to me, if I intend to run again, I have to fill it out. It's not due until July, but I have to commit to it by the end of the month. Well, I have, and there's numerous people I've talked to about that, people that have done it and know what it's all about.
Well, what about, Henry, like, when I ran in 2020, I didn't sign up until the qualification.
We didn't have that sixth form then. We've always had Form Number 1, but now, in order to fill it out, you own this property, that property, that property, that was all, okay, for Form Number 1. Now you have to put a number alongside of it as to what it's worth.
Can we find out if that's correct?
Well, it is. If it's Form 6, you got to put the actual value.
Okay. I've not heard that, the only thing I heard at the seminar is that anybody who serves or runs in the year of 2024, that's when the new law takes effect, you have to do Form 6.
If you were to, if somebody resigned before December 31st, they would, in that same webinar that I was on, too, they said they would have to, they would fill Form 1, they would have to, it's only if you've been in '24, January 1st, you're still, yeah, we are, so you have to fill Form 6.
Okay, so back to your question, John.
Yeah, it sounds like that the majority consensus is for me to bring back, and I think what I would do is I'll bring back a group of potential attorneys for you all to consider as a retainer to be for the village to utilize, and that way, to utilize for Form 6. I assume it would also include the manager, since the manager's an employee in the village, and would have access to that. So I can, assuming that's the directive of the majority, for the first issue, first item, I can reach out and get potential retainer agreements for you all to consider.
Be aware, it becomes public record.
There's no, there's no, so, and you're going to create a resolution?
The only way out is to resign.
That will approve, whoever you select.
The next thing, then, the next issue?
You have to do it by the end of this month.
That's right, that's right.
The next issue.
You have to do it by the end of this month.
The only way to get out is to resign by the end of the year.
The only way you can get out of doing this, the only way.
I just want somebody to do it for me.
Okay, that's fine.
The next item was the concept of a, as Mark described it, we, and as you all might recall, with Dave Webb, with former council member Dave Webb, the county has a provision in its code that the village adopted, and it's still technically part of our village code, even though it's not, you won't find it in there, we adopted the county code unless we changed it, that provides for a mandatory payment of a council member's defense of a civil or criminal case, will reimburse the attorney's fees if they are successful in defending against that case. It's only if you're successful, it's not if you plead no contest, or you're adjudicated guilty, it's a successful defense. The request, as I understand it, was to create an ordinance that would include that as well as ethics claims, and I'd have to see if that's considered administrative, if not, we could also include administrative, where there would be a provision in the village code that if a council member is, charges are filed against the council member as a result of you acting in your capacity as a council member, should you defend that, be successful in defense, that the village would reimburse your fees, your attorney's fees related to that. That's, as I understand it, my other question is, I have seen some, if you want to go that route, I have seen some municipalities also include, like, your manager or department heads in case that there's a claim that's made against them, I would want to know, would you like me to include that as well? Again, it's only if they're acting in their capacity for the village. I mean, if they're acting outside of their capacity, same thing with a council member, it would not be covered, it's only covered when it's acting in a capacity as, with the village. So, one, do you want to do that? And two, what is the scope? Do you want it to only apply to the council, or would you like to apply beyond that to department heads as well?
Any comment?
Not yet, please.
And this would just be direction for me to bring back an ordinance, and then the ordinance, obviously, will have two readings on that as well.
I think we should cover everyone, I mean, this job, you never know what's going to come out of the woodwork, it's not fair to serve in this position for what we get and then have to pay that on top of it, that's not right.
I'm in agreement.
I'm certainly in agreement.
All right, let's move on, then.
Okay, I will, I will bring that back for an ordinance for your consideration.
Thank you.
All right, so John, I just heard Van say, and council, are we, we've not done any public comment, do, are we wanting a public comment?
I approve public comment, yes, I approve it.
Okay, Van, go ahead.
Mr. Quick just mentioned David Webb and the parameters for his attorney being paid by the village. Now, Mr. Webb paid a $250 fine to eliminate, to get him so he didn't have to get in front of a judge. That, to me, does not think, say that he defeated the charge against him by any sense of the word, because I was here when he was talking to Henry right in that spot, and I had to go get Mr. Quick to go get between them, because it was out of the sunshine. And Mr. Webb acknowledged that through his lawyer by paying a $250 fine. Now, in addition to that $250 fine that he paid, the village of Alamarada, due to what Mr. Quick just said, kindly paid almost $13,000 for the defense of Mr. Webb. Now... Now, being as he did not defeat the, the charge against him, being as he acknowledged he was in the wrong by paying a two hundred and fifty dollar fine, why was the village of Alamo Rata charged thirteen thousand dollars? And why was it not defended by our law component, Wyserota? Because it was clearly outside of, of the parameters that Mr. Quick just mentioned. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment? All right, with that being said, public comment is closed. Are we through, council? We've given Mr. Quick the direction. Everybody okay?
Thank, thank you all for enduring that. Thank you.
Okay, so we are moving on then to village attorney, village manager communications?
Excuse me.
Yeah.
John, could you address his, his, uh?
Yeah, I pulled up the, the adjudication order, and it, the order says your case was dismissed. It doesn't, it doesn't have anything about a fine. I know that there was some statement in, and I don't remember what news publication about it, but the actual order of adjudication is just a dismissal.
To be crystal clear, Dave Webb was not found guilty of violating the sunshine law.
Correct, and the, and the, yes, and his case was dismissed.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, John, you are village attorney, announcement of shade session.
Yeah, this will be very quick. It's just a statutory announcement I need to make for our shade session next month. Pursuant to Florida statute, section two eighty six point oh one one, subsection eight A, governing public meetings, I, as the attorney for the Alamo Rata Village of Islands, wish to advise the village during this public meeting that I desire advice concerning the litigation of Daniel J. Galizio versus Alamo Rata Village of Islands at all in the Circuit Court of the Sixteenth Judicial Circuit in and for Monroe County, Florida, case number twenty three dash C A zero 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 four four zero dash P. I ask that we hold an executive session on January ninth, twenty twenty four, at four P M. Attending this session will be the mayor and council members, the village manager, myself, John Quick, and special counsel Brian Koji. And if you all remember, this is being, this matter is being defended by the league's insurance carrier. That's who Brian Koji is, the insurance defense attorney. And that's all for that item.
All right, anybody have any questions or anything? Okay. Yeah, January ninth.
Uh, January ninth, immediately before our council.
Four o'clock. Four P M, yeah. Okay, so moving on to B, Maria. Quest for direction regarding reports for inclusion in the agenda, after-action report, village manager update, Wyserota billing, financial reports, and planned travel by council staff, tab ten.
So, um, I've received requests from at least three council members for various types of reports. Some were just, you know, isn't there something we could put on the website, other financial reports, things like that. But then, more recently, with bringing back the after-action report, and the realization that this was a report that had been done, and then it was at the discretion of a prior manager that the report no longer be produced, there was some concern that some reports maybe shouldn't be at the discretion of the manager, that they're important to, you know, our operations. So how could we, number one, first, whatever reports are identified that council would like to see, how could we kinda memorialize them as a requirement going forward? So that with the change in manager, these reports wouldn't necessarily go away. So the thing I thought of was, well, we have the council procedures now, and the council procedures include the sections of the agenda. So potentially, we could add a section that is just something like supplementary reports. And then once council agrees what reports they would like to see, then as part of the agenda, especially now that we're kind of on a monthly basis, we, we could, staff could provide the reports for council consideration, and then as this new section, that way it's been memorialized in our procedures, and then if the manager changes, they still would have to adhere to those procedures. So that's the first consideration, is whether you wanna do something like that. And then the second consideration would be, what reports do you wanna see? So based on my conversations with, you know, at, at least three of you, and then the types of reports that were kind of suggested, I included examples here. But the first report is the, the after-action report that we keep referring to. Unfortunately, I don't have page numbers in here. I tried to kinda block these off at tab ten. But as I mentioned, the first report is the after-action report. So what'll happen is, on an ongoing basis, you know, hopefully council will review this report, and then if you see things that you don't think were quite correct, as far as our interpretation of what the direction was, or, you know, you have questions, then when we get to that supplementary reports part of the agenda, that would be council's opportunity to ask those questions or, you know, bring those up.
How much of this is on the web?
Well, right now, the finance reports are. We don't have the after-action report, but technically, as part of the agenda, it's on the web. People would just have to know, you know, where to look for it. But we are, um, I think, planning, once we know council's good with the formatting of the after-action report, we can, I think we were planning to go ahead and post it on, on the website, so.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So question number one, or question number three, is have you looked at the after-action report, and do you, is the formatting good? Is this what you were conceptualizing as far as what you wanted to see? Does anyone have any changes or concerns, things that you think that we didn't quite get accurately as far as the specific, um, direction? Any feedback?
I, I like it. I think it's great to help keep us, keep, keep these things in the top of our mind. There's a lot of detail that comes to us between meetings, and it's hard to keep track of it. So this is a really nice way of tracking it along. I think it's great. I'm happy with the format. If we don't like it, we can change it and improve it as we go along, but I'm just one, whatever everybody else wants is fine with me.
Well, I think it's a great report. And, um, and then what I'd love to see is, as, you know, as you add to it after this meeting, it's in some sort of, there's, there's some sort of differentiation between the ongoing report and what you've added to it, so that we can sort of go in.
Yeah, whatever gets added will be in red.
Okay, and then, um, I did have a couple issues with a couple items on the report, but maybe we wanna talk about whether we like the report first, and then talk about what we have as issues with it. So do we, so yes, please, let's, let's do this. Let's memorialize it. Let's put it as, as a tab, a supplemental tab.
Yep, it's a winner.
I don't remember when we first, we got elected in twenty twenty. I don't remember being this, how long it is and how much in detail. I mean, you did something that was like three or four pages that was short, simple, and sweet. And it, it explained everything that went on within, from meeting to meeting.
Uh, I think it was just that the format was different. It was on a table format. This, you know, that was hard to work with, because it was a table in Excel or on Word, and a lot of times the formatting would get messed up. So that's why with this, it's a little easier as far as the formatting. But that was also a front and back, so it may have appeared to be.
She's not asking about all, like, I think we're just talking right now about
Just this one.
Component of the after-action, not all the financial stuff. That's another question. Just this little, I don't know.
Couple pages, there.
It's page, um.
Yeah, here it is, right here. So.
First couple pages.
Yeah, first couple, yeah. Strategic plan. That, this is what I'm, okay.
Yeah, just those couple of pages.
It's like six pages.
Yeah.
Yeah, seven pages, yeah, seven pages.
So, um, Evie Engelmeyer actually came up with this. It's kind of a, um,
That's page eight.
Guide.
A guide.
When there are issues, um, it's sort of like a decision tree to help, you know. Did council discuss the issue in a public meeting? Yes or no? If not, then it's an issue that we need to put on the next agenda. If yes, was there consensus, um, a minimum of three votes, that the item be added to the after-action report? There's a suggestion here, well, I don't think we said it, but, um, we just need to make sure staff does, and that's why we'll be double checking. Do you all agree that this is what you wanna see? You know, we're gonna have to take that time, you know, like, like we've tried to this evening.
I think Marnie's recording that, isn't she? I mean, I know we have it.
Right, but.
We, we, we just, over and over and over, we think, we've had, we think we've said something, and it's through no one's fault, it just gets misinterpreted, and, or, you know, your idea of what we said is different than mine, and so we, I, I mean, I just think it's worth it to take a second to say, is this?
Are we all okay with the format?
Yes, yes.
Henry, you okay with that? Okay. Okay, so, Lisbeth, we can agree, we're, we're good with the format. Now what, do we wanna point out? Who wants to point out what you were, your second item?
I mean, I thought it was thorough, and, um, you know, I did have an, an issue with the, um, P R twenty three oh one, it has to do with the pickleball issue, and, and, and on that same, it, P R stands for like, I don't know, recreation or something, oh, yeah.
It's under the Parks and Rec.
Right, and, and I didn't see that there is, I didn't see the item for directing for strategic planning, cuz I feel as if we had a conversation to give direction, to come back with, with some strategic planning for the park, to deal with things like parking and, and incorporating the pickleball courts. But what I see here is that it looks like we're moving ahead with pickleball plans without a bigger.
Lisbeth, what number was that under?
Uh, it's the very last.
Twenty three oh one.
Twenty three oh one, okay.
It would be hard to plan for pickleball courts when we also have other needs, like, you know, where are the guys gonna park their lawn mowers and how's
Well, that, yeah, that's where, I think this started before the discussion on the bigger Founder's Park Plan. So this, um, I think because it was under twenty five thousand, I'm not sure, we entered into an agreement with K two M to go ahead and start trying to see where pickleball courts and parking. But then Maria's working with the Parks and Recreation Committee on the strategic plan to get their ideas.
What, what, what concerns me, and this is just a good example of, of kind of a miscommunication, because what I think we had a conversation about was some formalized planning outside of, you know, the, the nice list that was presented. There are lots of capital projects and lots of, of, there's, there's like a laundry list of things we'd like to work on, but that, that does not, that does not address the changing needs of the park, even when we're having a conversation about this ball field and bathrooms. I mean, how, I would like to see some comprehensive planning, so we don't have forty nine bathroom stations, because whoever's using that corner of the park needs a bathroom, and then this one, and, you know, this begs us, this, and, you know, what a perfect opportunity to, to actually, um, create a little vision for where this park needs to be with the changing needs of our community. And for us, we, we, we get it. There's gonna be more pickleball. That's so exciting. But for us to focus on pickleball when we have a lot of other needs that we have addressed as, as a, as a board, and without looking at all of those needs and planning them to make this park flow, it, it's crazy. It's, 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 um, it's, um, it is, uh, we're not doing our jobs by not giving that direction. We don't give that kind of a direction. This is not a Parks and Rec committee action.
So we could suspend these efforts by K two M. We have a meeting with them tomorrow to see what they came up with preliminarily. We could tell them, look, let's just hold off, and then we could put out an R F P, bring the R F P to council, if, if you'd rather that it didn't come from the Parks and Rec Committee, and try to develop a scope that then you all would be asked to expand upon and clarify.
So how about this?
Cuz truthfully, I don't quite know. It, it seems like the park is what it is, so how we anticipate, it's kinda hard to say. We've got these facilities here, oh, but everything's changing, and now we wanna change it. At a certain point, it all seems kinda permanent. So that's where we're a little confused, admittedly, on exactly how this is gonna happen. What are we gonna eliminate to put something else in that everybody?
I could answer that. So when, when, um, you know, when we look to create solutions for problems like this.
Oh, my goodness. Sorry. No, I'm just, I was yawning, I'm sorry.
But, but I get it. I get why you don't understand that, cuz your expertise is finance, and you are amazing at finance, but there is, there is a group who does parks, and they could say, oh, I see, you have needs, like, you're using your waterfront to park trailers on. You have, uh, the, the, the A J's guys back here with, you know, very expensive equipment in the sunlight. They need, that needs cover. You have a whole western wing of the park over here that's used, I don't know, to feed the cats, actually. I mean, and we've got a bunch of.
And the roosters.
And the roosters, I mean, that, I get why it's, why that's, you don't see that, cuz that's not what you do. Nor is it what we do, and nor is it what the committee does, but there are experts at this, and, and this is a multimillion dollar facility. Why aren't we planning?
So, Lisbeth, I, I'll throw a question out there. We have somebody that's coming in as our manager on, 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 uh, January the eighth, who happens to be the head strategic planner for Monroe County. This is what she's done. And I don't know if anybody else would like to throw it in. I mean, I've talked to Holly, I've talked to Dave Rice, I've talked to Michelle Coldiron, Greg Cates, and, and they say she's one of the best. And you know who I'm talking about, Kimberly Matthews. So who's had a lot of experience with that, so why wouldn't we give her the opportunity to, I'm sure she knows, could find what, exactly what you're talking about, that company that specializes in designing, looking at our park system, just what you just described, and bring, we put out an R F Q, you know, or an R F P to, for those people to bid on that, to come in and do what you're.
I think that, that this woman is, is, understands planning. I, I, and I'm so excited about that. And that would say to me that, you know, let's hold off on building out our pickleball courts until we put it into a plan. Sure, I mean.
Can we just at least hear, I want, I'm curious to what the consultant comes back with. I mean, didn't we already pay him or sign contract with him?
Uh, just some, for work they've done to date, but they haven't finalized. So this was just a preliminary meeting. The total cost was gonna be twenty one thousand two hundred and eighty dollars, so I'm not sure how.
I'd cancel it. I'd cancel.
So, yeah, we might as well.
At least postpone it, I mean.
Cancel it for now, I mean.
K M two Hill, that's who it is.
K M, K M two.
Why would you?
A two M.
That's an engineer.
A two M, yeah, that's, that's, I'm thinking of, I don't know, I, I work with them in Key West, so, thinking of their name.
No, no, I'm saying.
So we'll go ahead, we'll, we'll cancel, we'll let them know, look, just cancel, and then we'll develop an R F Q for professional services, professional,
Park drawer.
Design and engineering services, for a, to develop a park, like a park master plan.
Well, at, at least a, a good tune-up of what we got. Elizabeth made a good point about parking trailers down by the water. That's the most, you know, that's a prime piece of the property used for parking. Now, I know that, that we don't know what alternatives there are. I mean, that's kinda been the parking spot for that thing by default, cuz we just don't have any other place to put them. But maybe smart people, smarter than me at least, can figure that stuff out, or make it better.
Maria, who, the boats there, cuz I walk around here quite a bit, and who, I didn't, I don't remember all the boats. Whose boats are those out there? Are they people at the marina, or?
I guess a lot of the marina residents have like second boats. And they keep them parked there.
Do they have to pay to park store in there?
Um, I'm, I think so. I think they pay a little bit extra to be able to park their trailers.
I don't really pile on here, but I walked back there several months ago, and there were boat trailers and other things where the weeds were growing through them, you know, so tall. They haven't been moved in maybe years, and they've probably been flooded and rusted to hell and back. I don't even know if they're worth, you know, salvage or not, so. that's the kind of thing I'd just like to see get addressed.
And then, at one point, we did try to get a legislative appropriation to look at, um, a concept for a new public works facility that might have included an actual council chambers. That would have been like on the hill over there, but, um, that funding never, didn't come through, so we kind of dropped that. But that would be another thing.
I hate to say like, this could be a community meeting, where, you know, people come and, and talk about what they want in the park, I mean, I mean, it, it's, it's, I don't know if we're gonna get this solved tonight, you know, at nine-twenty as to what needs to go into this RFQ, but.
So, community meetings would be part of this effort, they would be required to have community meetings.
It's kind of a big deal.
Get that feedback. So, we'll go ahead and move in that direction, and then I'm sure Kimberly Matthews, as we're working on this, she would be able to.
So, that's on our after-action.
Got A-A-R right there.
We're gonna get you a shirt that says that.
I'm gonna wear it.
Hey, Elizabeth's gonna have it on her shirt when she comes in here Thursday.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Just from this.
Very good.
And, and we're not even like on top.
So, you realize it won't all get done at once.
Oh, come on.
Just to, just to speak to that, the great thing about this report is that you can put on a, a, you can manage our expectations, so when we think, oh my gosh, I've been waiting for this, it's like right there, oh, it's not gonna get done till April, so. Anyway, all right, your second, your second question was about the. Financial reports, sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry, go ahead.
So, um, there was also.
My muscle's locked up.
A council member requests that, um, we include Wyserota's billing every month as a report to council. Um, the only issue with that is a lot of times on the billing itself, there's sensitive information with regard to certain litigation, so, we could certainly provide their statements, but, um, John or someone from Wyserota would need to go through and redact first.
I would be happy with a general summary for that exact reason, uh, anything litigation involved should be minimal.
So, as, what I did provide here was, um, this is actually a summary of our FY twenty-two, twenty-three billing, and so the matter numbers are listed on the left, and then it gives monthly totals for each, how much was charged, and then a, a sum, cumulative sum for the year. If, if this suffices, then we could, you know, certainly, I produce this when we're signing off on the invoices to be paid. I just wasn't sure if the expectation is there, that council would approve payment before it's made. Okay, right, I'm. Okay.
If this, you can just add this, I, I, my, my curiosity going forward is that, you know, maybe we get to it in a minute, but, you know, looking in the latter part of this with all these, you know, you know, accounting details, you know, five dollars and twenty-three cents for Office Depot or something, I'm not gonna read that every month, I'll just be very honest with you about that, and I don't think I should, this is a, this is a executive function, we don't get into the minutia and the micromanagement of this, so, I mean, general summaries are fine, I, I mean, maybe others will differ, and I respect that, but I, I'm not reading forty pages of, you know, receipts, sorry.
Uh, the, so it's a summary of Wyserota monthly, are we in agreement?
Year-to-date.
Okay, and then what about the next one, which is?
So, the next one, um, was, uh, a suggestion that we should, that the manager should provide an update to council, whether that's weekly, monthly, quarterly. So, I wasn't sure what kind of update, uh, if anyone else feels similarly, that the manager should be communicating to council either, whether it's accomplishments, what did everybody do all week, besides whatever's occurring here at the meeting, so you're aware that we do a lot more over there than just what you see in the agenda book. So, just to, for discussion, um, what I did include was a quarterly report, the first page is here, where it says Village Manager Update, um, this quarterly report that kind of has blue on it, this is something that Mary Swainy used to do under Seth Lawless, he would provide a quarterly report to council. How beneficial this is, you know, like, truthfully, I would be like, I would go on and see how many POs we ran, you know, ninety-three POs, and we cut two-hundred-and-thirty-three checks, is that, does that mean anything? I don't know, and then I would try to, like, for finance, say what RFPs we had issued, and then anything else, if we had completed our audit, our annual audit, you know, things like that. So, this is one example, another one, which is quite detailed, is the city of Ormond Beach, where, you know, they're putting how many emergency calls they had, uh, the planning department is putting every development application they looked at, the building department is putting the construction projects that they're inspecting and how far along they are, um, so, again, this would be something that might be more timely when you have a manager and you direct that manager, or, you know, I know Ted had planned to do like a newsletter, um, he just never got to that, so, it's really, how does this get turned into an expectation of the manager, and whether it should be?
I mean, I, I like the idea that, that, that we have the opportunity to set up a manager for success, and part of that would be that the manager has an awareness of this level of detail within their own, you know, within, within their own department, and, I mean, I, I'm, I want to know this information, but, and I, I think the, I don't know, some people in the community want to know this information, I, I would love to see this quarterly report.
How much of all, this whole thing is on the web?
That's not, the only stuff is the finance stuff, which I haven't gotten to yet.
Okay, but when our agenda goes out, if it's in our agenda, then the pub, general public.
Then it'll be on the web.
All right, so I just want to know, okay.
So, is this something, as far as the village manager report, you'd kind of like to wait until you have a permanent manager, or?
No.
So, right, so that's why I didn't think so.
My opinion is, let, uh, just, yeah, I, I would like to see it, but whatever, but, does anyone have an opinion? I mean, I would like to see this, I think it helps the manager understand that they have a relationship with their departments, and we need to know information.
Anybody else want to comment? Okay. Okay, do we want to, but, do we want to wait for a new, a quarterly?
Quarterly is fine.
Yeah, okay, so four times a year, okay.
So, um, maybe based on calendar quarter, like, January, February, March, so we would target.
So, do we, do we want to start this again in January, then, Maria?
Right, so, have a March quarterly report.
Right.
And then if there's still an interim, um, you know, I would certainly assist that person, to develop a report, and then something along the lines of the one that Seth did would work. Okay.
I just wonder when you're gonna have time to do.
Yeah.
Your regular work, because you're gonna be doing all these doggone reports.
Are, are we all okay with that, then, and we can do it quarterly, we can move on with that?
Okay, so.
Okay, Henry, you got something?
I've been looking at this stuff for forty years, and my code was, because I got balance sheets from all the businesses, I've, keep it simple, that was my code, just keep it simple. All I want to know was the expenditures and the income, for me, and I run a lot. So, if, if you can take my suggestion, just to keep it simple, uh, and make me happy. All I'm, all I'm interested in is the income and the expenditures, that's it.
Well, that's what the first report does.
Okay.
Um, the other thing you have to remember is that in local government budgets are basically law, so that's why it's very important to also be aware of what the budget is, and that's why we have to budget for items if there's gonna be any.
I understand that.
So, um.
Balancing the budget, so to speak, on a quarterly basis, that's, that's fine with me.
So, the, the first, as far as the financial reports, the first report's a budget versus actual, this one is through, for this fiscal year, which started October one, it's through November thirtieth, it has every revenue account, it starts with the general fund, all the revenue accounts, so that's your income. Uh, basically, as of eleven-thirty, in the general fund, we brought in almost three-point-seven million dollars, and then the expenses are broken out by department. As we move along in the year, um, and pass budget amendments, then I run the report so that you can see what those amendments were, and then there is a column for encumbrances, and that's whenever we've issued a PO, that's gonna use up your budget funds as well, so there, the POs are listed as well. So, that's what this is, it's your, your ins and your outs.
It's fine.
But it's by fund, so there's also the impact fee fund, the solid waste fund, the, you know, the, um, so, this is posted on the website, under the finance page, every month, I go in and post an update. So, in January, I'll put the report up as of December thirty-one of twenty-twenty-three. One of the things that I had hoped to do, and I've been working with our software provider, is they have a portal that people can go in and they can kind of look and see, look at our budget for the year, and then look at actuals, and then drill down and look at payments, and you can even put in the name of a vendor and see how much the villages paid that vendor, but, um, the example I was given was for a higher level of software than the one we have, it was for a lo, a high, a bigger local government. What I wanted to see was the desktop appear as our financial reports appear in those same groupings, like licenses and permits as a revenue, and then you could drill down and see the accounts that make up licenses and permits, so that if you're looking at our annual report, um, you, you, it would match, but they told me that they can't do it that way, so, I've kind of dropped that, and what I realized is, basically, what this portal provides is a budget versus actual, which is here, and then what it provides is, um, vendor history and payments to vendors. So, alternatively, what I've done here is, for council, the vendor purchasing report, which has all the vendors and then how much we've paid them to date, um, this is a good indicator of, I use this report to see, have we reached a twenty-five thousand dollar mark yet? And if we are over twenty-five thousand, making sure that we went to council or have an agreement, you know, all of that. This is just for this fiscal year. The next report, which is like a disbursements report, um, this is the one that's lengthy, and this one's lengthy because it covers both October and November. This is, you know, by vendor, shows every invoice, the detail on the invoice, and this is posted on our website now, on the finance pages, and then next month, it would just be the December, it would just be December.
You want Maria to continue on with this, or, I mean, we already said what we want, okay?
Well, if that's, if that's.
I'm just making sure I'm covering it all, so, is this something you want to see on a monthly basis in your agenda book? Or is it sufficient that it's online, and if you want to see it, you'll go online?
Quarterly, we want it quarterly, that's what we all talked about, right?
Oh, on.
For the manager.
The manager's report, right, I, I just wanted to know where we're going with this, in other words, if it's gonna be put on as an agenda item, are we gonna have a lengthy discussion, we're gonna go down?
No, it would only be if council sees something that they want to pull for discussion. It'll be a supplemental report, they're all in there, if you see something that you want to ask about, then when we get to that item, you say, well, I want to ask about this expense.
But this big fat part of this thing with all the checks and stuff that you wrote.
It's online, it's online.
It's online, but it won't be as fat next time, because it'll only be for one month.
But, she said it's a supplemental report, we don't, unless we want to pull something out and talk about it, we don't have to, because are we, because if we're gonna sit here and do this every meeting, what we're just going through right now, then.
No, we're not doing this every meeting, unless council.
I'm gonna just say this, if it's in there, somebody's gonna want to talk about it, and this is the minutia detail that a manager deals with, not the council, if there's a problem, I think the manager or the staff should bring this to us, we don't get into the micromanagement of how you, you know, what checks you write to what vendor, I don't care, I mean, I care that you're following the law, but I, I can't.
There's members of the community that.
They can go online and look at it, and if they want to bring it to our attention, they can send me an email, I'll ask to put it on the agenda that way, but, I mean, you know, this is like fifty, we're killing a bunch of trees every week with this stuff.
Can, can we, are we all in agreement, we already talked about it, can we move on?
So, it's sufficient for these financial reports to be online?
Yes.
Efficient for me, yeah.
And, and then one point of clarification, just because you guys brought it up, these, I just want to make sure, are these are gonna be, this will be a non-discussion item unless council, a council member indicates they have something they want to talk about, is that? I just want to make sure we, we all understand.
On, on the supplement.
Yeah, is that what?
It's a non-discussion item, it's a supplement.
Yeah, okay.
Right.
Okay.
It's, it's just information filler.
Okay, thanks, I just want to make sure it was clear for, for others.
All right.
So, the final report was just a suggestion that, uh, we include detail on any travel done by either council or, um, staff, so that's the last page in this tab ten?
Yes, I think it's a great idea.
With that, we'll include that, um, are there any other reports you can think of that you want to?
Do you guys want the travel report?
I don't.
I, I want it, I want to know, I mean, not only do I want to know it, but I want to know like what hap, I don't, even though I'm not gonna bring it up at meetings, I want to know, yes, I want to know where people are going, and I think the community wants to, so.
Here's my thing, everybody sitting on council gets the same emails from League of Cities?
Not us, it's, it's the community should know that we just went to the climate summit, and so did our planning director, and it could be, it's in our agenda, there's nothing, it's not like, it's sort of like a self-promo thing, and, and, I don't know, Marty goes and learns things, that's nice to know that our clerk is up to speed, but we get those emails, but the community doesn't, so I'd say, let's just add it.
Every bit of this is public information.
You know what, it, it, this is, um, this is a transparency thing that, that shows how much good work our staff is doing, and how much commitment you are making, because you are going to learn in faraway places, and, and I would love to see that in a report. It, it is, it's, I mean, so, all right, are we in agreement, there's a travel report?
You go sit in air-conditioned rooms all day long, man, and you get.
But, buddy, it's good, it's what, I mean.
How do you learn, how do you learn?
I know, that's.
Start other relationships.
Move on.
Okay.
So, as far as supplementary reports in this new section of the agenda, it would be the after-action report, a village manager update quarterly, Wyserota billing summary, and then the council and employee travel. And just so you know, I am working on another report that would be on all our capital projects, you know, how much we spent to date, what, well, that's the thing. That's why I haven't gotten to it yet, but, um, that would be another report that I would just post on the web.
Okay, I would just like to have a report from you that you're doing, if it gets to the point that you're doing so many reports that you don't have time to do your regular job, let us, help us, let us help you make an adjustment to that downward. This just, I mean, I'm glad we have, more information is generally good, I think transparency is a mandatory thing, we need to have all that, but.
Well, the other thing is that I think people forget, for all of these payments, there was a director, there was a staff member that made the order, there was a, a director when the invoice came in that had a check, there's the finance director, I'm signing off on all of these, the village manager's signing off on some, this finance department, um, has to enter all of these in to our software, or we have to initiate wires, or, you know, electronic payments, all of the receipts, which you don't even see the detail on the receipts, staff has to enter in all of those. You know, so there's a lot of work that goes on, and a lot of hands touch each piece of paper, even though we're trying to be as electronic as possible, um, you know, so a lot of this involves a lot of staff, and, um.
It's good that you're doing the reports, I just request that if it gets to the point where it's too much and it's interfering with your work, we should know that, that's, that's a report I want to see.
Maria, God bless you, because I can't, I couldn't even fathom some of the stuff when I, some of this redevelopment stuff where he's, the, the, my friend in Fort Myers, he's got. where he's, the, the, my friend in Fort Myers, he's got five full-time employees in the CRA. This city of Boynton Beach got 10 full-time, they got a $23 million budget in just their CRA, in just the redevelopment. And I, so I can't imagine what, and we don't even have that. So what, and what you're doing, you know, what you're saying, how many times somebody touches that piece of paper? How many man-hours actually went into, from the time it got ordered until the check, until it got logged and everything else? But, yeah, so anyways, I, Elizabeth, I, I think it's all, we all want transparency, okay? I, 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 I agree.
Yeah.
It, it's, uh, you know-
But transparency includes making a public records request and that request being fulfilled. That is also transparency. Just because you can't go on our website and immediately find what you want, because everyone has a different want, that's not lack of transparency.
Right.
We, you know, responding to public records requests is also transparency.
Okay, right, okay. All right, so can we, we can move on now to, uh, uh, let's see, with discussion, see the marine-based emergency response program? Chief Abel? Okay, do we want to decide what we're, how, how far do we want to go here, guys? We're going to, you want to go to the consent agenda next, and, um-
Anytime now.
Okay, all right, Henry, I hear it, let's do the consent at least, okay? Okay, chief?
Alrighty, I'll, uh, I wrote a script to keep me on point, so I'm not babbling, but I'm still going to babble, but it's all good. Um, so there's been a slow drift in, uh, the, or slow shift, rather, in our waterborne assets availability to help us out when emergencies occur on the water in the Keys. The days of the Coast Guard out patrolling all day, and Marine Patrol, and FWC is their name now, always being out on the water and always patrolling, always having a presence, that doesn't exist anymore. I can tell you, I'm out all the time on my boat, I have not been boarded for a safety check in 20-plus years. So I'm not trying to jinx myself, I'm just saying that's the reality of it. Um, most of the time, the patrols are reactive, and they're reactive to complaints. FWC boats parked down at Seabase, Worldwide Sportsman, Estes Boat Camp, and Tavernier Creek Marina, that doesn't exist anymore. Those guys are all on trailers at Estes, and sometimes one's actually in the water. The assets aren't staged, and they're not as staffed as they used to be in years past, and that's created a gap, um, that we've identified here in fire rescue, and we're trying to close that gap. I'm not saying they don't do a great job, they do an amazing job, and I'm not trying to replace them at all. I'm trying to augment them so we can make it better. Um, we've been chasing, me and, uh, Jason, my number two, we've been chasing demilitarized boats for years. Uh, through, we've brought it through past councils, past managers. Um, I've run it through Rick Scott's office, both when he was a governor, then now that he's a senator, I've utilized him and some of his staff to help me chase it. EM Director of Homestead Air Force Base, Department of Homeland Security, Customs and Border Patrol, points of contact with Warren Officer Oliver through the Coast Guard to see if there's something available via, um, demilitarized stuff, uh, out of Norfolk, Virginia. I've spoken with Captain Dupree with FWC for vessels that were taken out of service that still had useful life in them. FWC is the only one that's come through at any given time, however, that boat had soggy stringers, a tank that leaked, and no motors on it, so that's not really a viable option. That's, you're trying to give me your crap, and we don't need it, sorry. Um, due to the unfortunate event causing her daughter's death, there's been a, an outside force helping to push this matter of trying to bring some sort of marine vessels to our community. For the past couple of years, the fire chiefs have been meeting countywide to bring onboard the Marine Emergency Response Team Concept. Something that works really well on the west coast of Florida with all the agencies, whether they're federal, state, or local, they all work together. Current resources are responsive to calls, and when available, however, the less resources here that we have has created that gap. In order to aid that gap, we're proposing the implementation of the Marine Emergency Response Team Concept here in the Keys. This is a county-wide concept, it's not just Alamo Rata. It would be from Ocean Reef to Key West, and it actually runs all the way up the west coast, Lee County, Collier County, and Charlotte County. They also utilize this. Um, something that is also being taken up at a legislative level is Representative Milo, is Lauren Mello, Milo, is trying to actually push this as a statewide concept, as the industry standard for us, for coastal communities. Um, that's another story. Um, at our last meeting in September with Representative Lauren Milo present, Representative, uh, Mooney's office, Holly Rashine's office, the fire chiefs from Lee County, Collier County, Charlotte, Monroe, Marathon, Alamo Rata, Ocean Reef, Key West, the head guys of FWC, Sector Key West, Station Alamo Rata, Heartlike Holly Corporation founder June Smith, were all present to help try to figure out the best route to better address the marine needs here in the Keys. Chasing appropriations through legislation was discussed with Representative Milo leading the charge to put forth the appropriations for boats for Key Largo, Alamo Rata, Marathon, and the county, and to aid in their expense of the purchase. Other ideas were implemented, or other items were discussed, rather, such as the training requirements, and, and who could offer them, and how much they were, and where we could track them down. It was a very positive meeting with all, uh, walking out agreeing to chase options to incorporate the Marine Emergency Response Team Program within the Keys, even if it's just a little bit at a time, one boat at a time. Again, how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. Afterwards, one of the battalion chiefs from North Collier County stated that they had a boat that they were taking out of service, and then wanted to know if we were interested in trying to chase that option. After sending over the specifications, a recent survey, and talking with our local surveyor once we had it in hand, and some local mechanics that could run the numbers from the, the serial numbers from the boat, they looked everything up through Mercury, they looked at the surveys, and both agreed that this was a viable boat that would serve us well, and it'd be a great starter boat for Alamo Rata. With two workshops down, one budget meeting down, and the next one, the final budget for the, the year, uh, only a few days away in the budget process, I can read a room, haven't been doing this for 24 years and surviving. By not being able to do so, I knew coming last minute for the last budget meeting for a revision to my budget was not a smart move. Also looking at others to pick up the boat, I started looking at other options to, uh, try to chase down this boat. Um, all that recognized, I chased down other avenues through the Firefighters Benevolent Association here in Alamo Rata. It falls well within their mission and their vision statement, to be able to give back to the community to help out, so it falls within their 501(c)(3) status, and it was a smart move. I took it to the membership, and I took it to the board, and we all agreed, and we voted on it. The next step towards the MERC program is accepting the donation of the boat, which we purchased through Alamo Rata Firefighters Benevolent Association. Had they not purchased the boat the way they had, through the Benevolent Association, had we chased normal routes through the village and our purchasing procedures and all that, we would have missed the opportunity because other organizations were trying to snatch that boat up. Um, so, the next step would be, hopefully, adopt, adopting the concept of bringing a Marine Emergency Response Team Concept to the, to the village as a larger part of the county's process that we're bringing forward as well. And then training our staff in the fireboat handling. Most of them are really good on boats, but there's a specialty aspect when it comes to firefighting and recovering divers from the water and stuff of that nature. The fixing them, once we have them on the boat, my crews have that mastered, second to none, I'll put them up against anybody. Um, so simultaneously, while all this is going on, Representative Milo has been working on putting together appropriations for new boats throughout the Keys. Again, I mentioned who there are, and there's five or six boats that she's trying to chase. The village is also included in that concept. Um, her willingness to chase the appropriations on our behalf to fund for a new boat with a realistic ETA, unfortunately, if we get it, it'll be in the appropriations that start next year. It'll go in front of the governor, May or June, we won't get the money until much later, then it's a year and a half, probably two years build time. So even if we bring this on and we get the boat appropriations this year, realistically, we won't see it for two years. Meantime, hopefully, we can utilize the, the boat I'm hoping you're willing to take as a donation in January. Um, but that's another story also. So, um, if the first boat is a good boat, and it's still got life at the end of the two years, hopefully, we would expand our, our Marine Emergency Response Program and utilize both until one eat, ends, meets end of life. Um, if at that time in two years, when we get the new boat, in theory, if we move forward with the MERC program, then we would take that other boat out, we would auction it off and do some cost recovery that way. Um, the concept, if we do have two boats, is like it is now, we would keep one here at Founder's Park to cover the north end of the village. Um, on busy weekends, I would move it to Estes, I've already cleared with FWC, so then I've got instant ocean, I've got instant bayside access. It saves that six, seven minutes it would take from leaving here to go to get to Oceanside. Puts us a little more center in the village. If we end up with two boats, concept would be the same. Keep one boat here, keep one boat down at Seabase. That way, we can utilize it for both our south end, where our populace is, but also utilize it for our brothers and sisters south through Ritual Aid for Long Key and stuff of that nature. Um, Monroe County and Dade County have a unfortunate game that they play back and forth, and that is that we have the greatest numbered of registered vessels in the state. We get it one year, Miami-Dade gets it the next. Unfortunately, the other statistic that follows that is we have the most, um, boating accidents and boating fatalities. We have it one year, Miami-Dade has it the next. We don't have the resources down here like we used to, I'm simply trying to close a gap, that's all I'm doing. Um, the way I did it in procuring the, the CV boat through the Firefighters Benevolent Association, maybe not the best route to go, um, but if I didn't do it the way I had done it, we would have lost this opportunity, and we'd still be two years out on trying to get a boat. So I did what I thought was best for our community, and, uh, I used my connections, and I made it happen. So I'm kind of like a gunny sergeant, don't ask me how to do it, or how I did it, just, if you need it, I'm going to make it happen.
And then your finance director gets audited.
But I bought it through proper channels, and I'm donating it via proper channels through resolution, hopefully in a month. So the training for the boat program is quite expensive, it's through the National Association of Boat, State Boat Law Administrators, NASBO. Uh, but we have the lu- luxury of having about five of those instructors here at Station Alamo Rata. Uh, the courses are $32,000 apiece, and they are being donated to Alamo Rata Fire because we have a great working relationship with them. They need something, I ask, they get it, we're all happy, we work really well with our brothers and sisters, both federal and state level, it's amazing. Um, the other aspect is, uh, the six-pack license, the OUPV, which many of our backcountry guides have that, and some of our, our offshore guys have that. That would be the national standard, so we would be meeting that standard as well. I've already received one grant to help fund that, so that we can get our guys that don't already have their captain's license, get them onboard and get them their captain's license. The cost estimates that we have for the program, um, I was asked yesterday to try to chase this down. Don't really have something specific to our program yet, because we don't have it yet. However, Ocean Reef has as close as to what we have, or what we're trying to build with their sa- with their safe boat that they procured about 14 months ago. Uh, they spent about $7,000 for fuel, and they spent about $10,000 for maintenance on that. And they don't staff theirs full-time either, as we are not going to staff our boat full-time. I'm going to have people on staff that are trained up to speed and able to utilize it, and it wouldn't be a full-time staffing position unless we have something like the paddleboard events that go on on the backside, conch scramble, opening season for lobster mobster season, uh, the alligator light, the gold star swim here at the park, stuff like that. Then obviously, we would stand up the boat and have them ready to go. Um, and that's it in a nutshell, sorry, I don't have my water, and I'm losing my voice. And I'm here if you have any questions on, uh, the concept of it. And, uh, yes, I owe you lots of paperwork, I'll in a date your email later, and you'll all get it, because I sent it to him.
Want to get a drink?
I do.
Go get it.
So while he's doing that, um, so as, as Terry explained, um, the benevolent purchased this, the used boat, and it was for $45,000. So what we had planned to do on this agenda was go ahead and have a resolution. We have a donation agreement, um, that John prepared, and, um, we were going to ask council, you know, do we want to accept this boat? But then we kind of realized, well, that's kind of a tip of the iceberg thing when, because really, we haven't even talked about a marine-based emergency response program. Um, so that discussion needed to happen first. Really, the, the first decision of council is, do you agree that the village should go ahead and establish this program? Knowing that there's a few unknowns right now, we really don't know what that total cost is going to be, what, if there's any CBA implications, you know, um, probably what'll happen, maybe during the negotiations, is it would become another incentive, maybe not an additional incent- incentive. It could always be that, well, they have to give one up to get this one, you know, those are all things that'll have to be worked out. Um, I, you know, of course, so anyway, so that would be the first thing, is coming back with a resolution to approve the acceptance of this boat from the benevolent, and then authorizing, you know, signing of the donation agreement. Personally, if the council agrees that this is an important con- uh, program to get established, personally, I don't think we should be taking a donation from the benevolent. My opinion is that the benevolent is for the benefit of the firefighters. Um, you know, we have a few million in the bank, um, I would think that we would want to reimburse the benevolent. Um, if we, if council agrees this is a good idea, and this was an appropriate first step. Um, otherwise, we can just accept the donation. The other thing, though, is, um, as Terry explained, Representative Mello, you know, we, we had the opportunity to put in projects for the legislative appropriation, uh, through our lobbyists, um, because we've already got a lot of grant funding and other funding, and some projects that, they're just taking a long time to get done, and we have grant funds. We really didn't have anything to request this year. Um, you may recall, last year, we got a legislative appropriation to help pay for half of an ambulance, um, which we're still waiting for delivery on, and then the two storage buildings that we need to build for the portable generators. Though, that was a little easier, because those were projects we already had identified. This is, this is a little different, and the appropriation is for, a request for $300,000, and it is for the purchase of a new boat. Um, so that, that's the other aspect. If we, the preliminary application was submitted by Representative Mello's office, the next step is that the village has to sign an, a second form by, I think it's like January 19th, um, to confirm that, that we want to follow through with this request. So that's the second ask of council, do you want us to go ahead and proceed with the appropriation request of $300,000 for a new, for a new boat?
And, and Jim Mooney, the reason Jim could not ask for this appropriation, because he's the chair of the appropriations committee, so that's why it was done through Mello?
Correct.
Yep, okay, so-
And I would just say, we, um, in terms from legal standpoint, we have not analyzed the implications on the CBA yet. Uh, that will be, take a good amount of time to do, and we didn't want to do that, because if, yet, if the council doesn't want to proceed with a program like this, I mean, it would be, uh, you know, the first, I mean, really, the biggest first question is, is this, is this a program that, that the council is interested in? Um, and, uh, you know, I do think that there will be some CBA implications, I'll be honest, I, I do. And, and the CBA is up next year anyway, there, there will be some negotiations, and those collective bargaining negotiations will be, will be taking place. But we, I have not analyzed that yet, because to go through that and the, the amount of time it would take, unless we have direction from the council, I didn't want to undertake that without clear direction.
Okay. Okay, council, we have some discussion, we want to-
Yeah. My note was, it should be a tab. I appreciate your presentation, but that was my note, off, right, right away.
Tab, he said it should be a tab.
Should be a tab for discussion, and whatever you, uh, agree to, but I think it should be a tab, and not close it out tonight for further discussion and a resolution accompanying that.
What was the, what was the last thing you said?
Excuse me?
You said, do, I missed the last thing that you said.
You said you'd close it out?
Said I would close it out.
For further discussion.
For further discussion, yes, absolutely. This warrants a tab all by itself, and I wrote down here, this, this deserves a tab.
If council agrees to accept the donation of the boat, then that would be a tab on the next.
Well- You know what, I, I, um, I'm not really sure how we can accept, and, yeah, okay, thanks for the presentation. And I, I know there's a lot more information than I got tonight- presentation. And I know there's a lot more information than I got tonight than we did yesterday. I appreciate all the extra work. I know that, I think it kind of puts us at a, I feel a little bit of disadvantage, because I'm not clear what this program actually, you know, the scope of work, the scope of action that this program will bring to the village. I need more information. I know that you mentioned other programs that are in existence. I would like to see what that means. I mean, I don't want a boat, and I know you're not suggesting this, but let me just say it in a way like this. I would like to be very clear on what it is this service is offering. Are we doing search-and-rescue, dive rescue? Is it to accompany, you know, nonprofit fundraisers? I don't, I mean, we have a bunch of volunteers who can do that. I want to know what the scope of work is for a program like this, and the cost. And I know that we can find that. I think it would be financially irresponsible for us to make a decision tonight without that information. And so therefore, I don't know how we could accept a boat, accept a donation right now. I don't think you came to the table asking us for anything right now, but just, here's something to consider, and let's get more detail and the financial ramifications and implications before we make a decision.
Let me, can I say something, Elizabeth? I look at this as, you know, and I, my hat goes off to the sheriff in the county that, with Trauma Star. I mean, I don't know how many of y'all saw Trauma Star in the last four or five days. I mean, back and forth, back and forth. I mean, constantly, you know, because they land here all the time. But I mean, since you've been around it, I hear it. I mean, it'll wake me up inside my house. I know what, and I can hear them coming. So, to me, the way I look at this is, have been a firefighter, and been a paramedic and stuff, and on the fire department, is that this is like a Trauma Star but on water. Okay? Like, this young lady, how old? She was thirteen years old, and Coast Guard didn't have lifesaving equipment, and she bled to death in Cojo or somewhere.
That'd be accurate. That's, June Smith is actually online right now. She's one of the driving forces, Heartlike Harley Incorporated. It's a 501(c)(3) that's helping us to try to cover any expenses that we come across, and she's the one driving and coordinating a bunch of the meetings, and staying out in front of political bodies like yourself to show that there's a need, state there's a need, and see what she can do to try to close that gap.
I'm not saying there's not a need, but we just need the finances to make a fiscally responsible decision. Yeah, yeah. And I don't think that's, I mean, I think that's what you expected to hear, I would think. I mean, anything else would be irresponsible.
Okay, Sharon?
I think it's something much needed myself. I mean, I'm out there every Sunday just about, and my husband fell on the boat and fractured his arm, and I had to drive back, and that wasn't a pretty picture, because I went across places I don't even know how I got across. So, it's the truth. So, I mean, it's something that we do need. I mean, we're surrounded by water. It's just common sense in a lot of ways. But again, I agree with Elizabeth. I'd like to know a little bit more, and I don't think they should donate the boat. I do think we should buy it, because they are a body that is supposed to help you guys not donate boats. So, I agree with Maria. So, that's how I feel.
That was not my intent.
Oh, I know.
Not to chase down for reimbursement. Again, it falls within the mission and the vision of the benevolent, to support community needs.
I understand.
Terry said yesterday, what the survey was, if we decided, if we said no, he can sell the boat and get his money back, and give the money back, and then some, and yeah.
I can nearly double my money. If you guys don't take it, I'll double the money, and the benevolent will double its investment. But that's penny wise, dollar foolish. The boat would be better served serving our community, for sure.
Do we need to extend a meeting now?
Yeah.
Okay. What are we gonna extend? Fifteen, twenty minutes? Twenty minutes?
Fifteen.
Depends if you're gonna chase your consent agenda or not.
We are gonna chase, do our consent, right?
Might want to do thirty minutes.
Or do up to twenty. Yeah. Okay, Mark, go ahead.
Well, first of all, I'd like to say that was a great presentation. You and I spoke earlier today. You gave me more detail there. There's a couple of different considerations, but I shared those with Sharon and Elizabeth, that I don't have enough information right now to make an intelligent decision. And one very big aspect of that is, how is this going to impact taxpayers? And, you know, there are unknowns. Maria has unknowns, you have unknowns. I accept that. But I think we have some time between now and the next meeting, where you told me earlier, you might be able to send us some more information and help to get us educated. I just feel a little uncomfortable committing to something like this, when I just, it's not a surprise, because we've had the books for four or five days. But I like the concept. As a boater, fisherman, diver, it's absolutely necessary. Every year, the water seems to get more and more dangerous. I've had my grandkids out on a pontoon boat with maniacs running between the sandbar and wherever the hell they go, and they don't see you, they don't care to see you. It's, you know, it's just a matter of time before there's gonna be a serious accident, not to mention everyday things that people get involved with, with fishing and slipping in water and everything. So, I'm sold on the concept. But I just want to have some more information, and then I'd like to know more about the program in general, again, how much we might need to budget to do something like that. And as a boater, I'd like to know more about the boat. And you said you had a survey, you know, a marine survey, tell something about the condition. I'm just curious about it. I am familiar, as I told you earlier, about the company and the boat. Yep. Wow, that's nice. It's got a wheelhouse on it.
Correct. It is built mission-specific. So, it's got a large door, four foot wide here for loading in divers, about two foot across the back for loading in divers or swimmers or injured personnel, five hundred GPM fire pump towards the rear with the deck on there, and then off the rear, it's got two handlines that it can operate as well. And there's not a single rod holder on the boat, so...
I'll fix that.
This was purpose-built for building and putting out fires and providing rescue, which is my concept.
How much does it draw?
A lot.
It'll float in eighteen inches. For a thirty-six footer, that's not that much.
Yeah, but it's still a lot.
Jack plates on it?
I'm sorry?
Have jack plates on it?
Yes, sir.
Wow.
Can you just put that information in the, whatever you're gonna present with us for us next week?
Sure. I'll send you guys all the information on the NASBLA. I'll send you the stuff on the MRT team, the concept behind it, the appropriations, the survey. I can send you all kinds of stuff. Trust me, I wouldn't waste this much time, effort, and energy if it wasn't something that I wholeheartedly believed in and thought was best for our community.
I want to commend you for what you did, to, you know, stick your neck out and use your relationships and your contacts to get that, and the way that you found a way to buy it without committing the village council to it upfront. That was really good on your part. Thank you for that.
Wasn't maybe necessarily the best approach, but it was what I had to do to get there.
Well, gunny sergeant, I appreciate it. So, you did the right thing, in my book, so...
Should the information that Terry's gonna provide be included in the next agenda, rather than him just send...
No, no, in the agenda.
In the agenda. Okay.
I think the public should see what we get to see, yeah. But if you want to send it early, it's okay with me. I'll read it over the holidays.
Absolutely.
Do you all want us to look at the CBA as well?
I think that's a very important part of the whole decision that we're gonna make. So, yes, sir, I personally would...
Okay, perfect.
All right, Chief.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And I have Ms. June. I believe she's via Zoom. If you guys would like to hear from her or chat from her. If not, that's completely up to you. She unfortunately is one of the driving forces. She's the mother of the young lady who perished down south.
She has her hand raised on Zoom.
Do we want to let her say something? Yeah. Go ahead.
Hello, I'm June Smith. So, my daughter, we had a terrible boating accident in 2017, and the Keys was not new to us whatsoever. And we go down there every year, many, many times, and just never had a freak accident. And within that took, while my daughter got injured, we called for help, everything that you could possibly do, asked for E for nine-one-one, phone calls, you know, nothing, nobody could come to us. There's not one FWC boat possible. Coast Guard wasn't available. Firefighters have no boats down there, no sheriff boats. Nothing was possibly coming to us. We got brought in by a, one of your residents, who has been known to do this before, because he knows there's no boats. You don't have a MRT program, so the phone calls, when you read my report, it took six minutes to go through, let me call FWC, let me call sheriff, let me call Coast Guard, let me call firefighters. It just feels like, for a population, you guys have twenty-seven thousand plus registered boats. I believe you get five million people there a year. You get two-point-three billion in ocean, recreation, tourist money. It just feels like, you know, I'm over here in Naples in Collier County, and there's twenty-six medical boats within thirty-something miles on the water. And so, what Terry's bringing to you isn't something that's hard or impossible to do. It's just gonna take a village, it's gonna take a bunch of people to work together and see what can happen. His boat, eighteen inches, that's still, there's plenty of channels. You can still get to plenty of areas. Our accident wasn't in shallow water. We were in channels. We just needed medical help, and we got zero. And over time, I've just kept track of stuff. I've had FWC officers send me stuff. Forty more people have died in the waters, in the waters down there, through heart attacks, through snorkeling, through issues, you know, accidents. Forty people since Harley has died in 2017. So, I can't understand how it can't become an idea to put boats in the water when you're like the biggest, you know, you're a very high boating community area. And they put one at Ocean Reef, which is a hundred something miles from Key West. So, there's nothing to help anybody on the water. So, I just think, whatever it takes to get something started, because like Terry says, we go through Lauren Mello, that's gonna take another two years. So, I feel he's fast-tracking it. We need something on the water. I mean, your resident, a thirteen-year-old boy just died earlier this year. I mean, things happen often down there. So, it's just scary and unbelievable that, you know, we've been talking for years, and it's still gonna take years more to get boats, unless we find a way to fast-track it. So, I just, I know it can happen, because it works in a lot of other parts of southwest Florida and Miami, I mean, Fort Lauderdale. Just why can't it happen in the Keys, when you have so much boaters? So, thank you for listening to me. I'm just trying to figure out how and why this isn't working yet.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you for helping our chief, and for your initiative that you're doing with Representative Mello.
No, I appreciate it. I appreciate all your time. And I know it's a big thing, but like you said, the Trauma Star is active. It's going. So, the water needs the same support, because accident happened in the water quite often, and time is lost when you can get zero medical help until you can get yourself.
Thank you. Okay, all right, so we're...
Well, that's it in a nutshell. Please consider it. I'll be sending emails out and throwing stuff together to add in addition to the resolution next month.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, so counsel, we're, I just talked to John. How about if we refer, we, D to Thursday, and John said we've already pulled E, so we can do our consent agenda, and we can at least do to twenty, which would be Attention Media Carlos, and then we'll call it tonight. Is that okay?
Would D and E go to Thursday?
No, well, D does.
E got pulled.
Yeah, he got pulled.
Well, E didn't get pulled, E got moved to Thursday.
Okay, yeah, yeah, okay. So, D and E go to Thursday, and then we'll do, so can we go ahead? You want to go ahead? And let's move on to consent agenda.
Is that okay with the majority counsel?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we're into the consent portion of the agenda. These items are of a routine nature, and council members have reviewed these items in advance and sought the advice of staff as they felt necessary. There'll be one vote on the consent items, which today are items Roman numeral nine, A through G, which are tabs thirteen through nineteen. If anyone would like to pull an item from consent, he or she should state so now.
None for you? None for you? Henry, anything for you?
Yes. Resolution of preliminary update to council procedures.
A tab?
Is that D?
Tab sixteen.
Sixteen. Yeah, sixteen.
Okay. We're gonna pull that first?
I disagree with it. I think it'll be just scrapped in general.
Can we discuss that?
You can discuss it all you want. That's my opinion.
Can you give us a reason why?
Yeah, because we don't need all this stuff. You know, I don't need procedures in front of me, as the hell I can do something. I just don't think we need that. We're supposed to be an adult organization. Every time I turn around, there's new something in front of us.
Is this about the two business days, Henry?
Are you talking about the whole pack, the whole tab?
The whole thing I'm talking about.
All right. Do we want to pull it and discuss it on Thursday night, then?
If you want to do that, that's fine with me.
Okay. Is that all right with you, Elizabeth, and Vice Mayor?
Yep.
Okay, all right. So, John, we'll take sixteen and move it to Thursday.
Yeah, sixteen's been pulled from, and will not be considered during this discussion now.
All right, all right. So, do I hear a motion? Any discussion or motion?
I'll move for approval.
Well, we gotta have public comment. Anybody want to speak a public comment, Marnie?
I don't have anyone signed up for this.
All right, public comment is now closed. Okay, did you make a motion?
Yeah, you have a motion and a second.
Second, okay. Marnie, call the roll, please.
Can you clarify who made the motion and seconded?
Mr. Mark Gregg was the motion, and Councilwoman Jolene was the second.
Thank you. Councilmember Mark Gregg?
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolene.
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder.
Yes.
That motion passes five to zero.
Okay. So, John, now, did we, where do we go? Do we, what, was that through nineteen?
That was through nineteen with the exception of sixteen.
Okay, so sixteen's gonna go to Thursday.
Yeah. Yeah, do you want to consider it now, or do you want to consider sixteen on Thursday?
Let's do it Thursday.
Okay.
Okay. Thursday, okay. So, what does that leave us then, to nineteen or twenty?
No, if we're continuing on, it would be tab twenty. And that's a resolution of the Village Council of Alamo Rata Village of Islands, Florida, approving a one-year agreement with Attention Media LLC to provide a social media and outreach program, authorizing village officials to implement the terms and conditions of the agreement, authorize the village manager to expend budget funds, authorize the village manager to execute the agreement, providing for a waiver of competitive bidding, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, Maria?
At the village council meeting on September twenty-eighth of this year, staff requested direction from the village council regarding the Attention Media contract, which was expiring on September thirtieth of 2023. The council communication at that time included the entire history of, you know, each iteration of agreement with Attention Media. And it included, ultimately, that staff was seeking direction from the village council on whether staff should return at the next meeting, which would have been October tenth, with a resolution to approve the renewal of the village's engagement of Attention Media for social media outreach services with a waiver of competitive bidding. Did council, the second option was that the council could direct staff to prepare and release an RFP for social media outreach services, and then coordinate the competitive bid process. And then a third option at that time was whether to suspend the services until a permanent village manager was hired and a corresponding public information officer would be hired, as that role is currently filled by the executive assistant to the village manager. So, with both of those positions absent, there's really no one to manage the contract. So, the suggestion was, we could suspend it, wait until a manager starts, and then look at it again, see what the village really wants to see in this program. A fourth option probably could have been to just extend the current agreement, leave it status quo as it is, and extend it until a new manager starts. and extend it until a new manager starts. Uh, so originally we, uh so what happened was I spoke with Carlos, I met with Carlos and revised the agreement based on my discussions with him and what he had hoped to see. Um, and then I um gave it to uh John to basically take it from there. So the reason it's taken until now um is because the negotiations took a bit of time, but they do change some of the elements in in this agreement. Uh, one of the things that changes is um that uh any increases in the fee that Carlos gets right now or Attention Media, the fee right now is seventy-two thousand dollars a year or six thousand dollars a month. Um, in the future, uh Attention Media would receive whatever increase uh staff receives as raises. Um, the other change is that there's no termination date, no set termination date. The contract would continue unless terminated by other, either party. Um, so that's kind of a considerable change. Um, and then there've just been some questions on who does he, Carlos, actually report to and take direction from? Um, you know, admittedly, th- this started as a council directive um by the prior council. It wasn't something that staff said, hey, we really need this service and we wanna, you know, we'd like you to approve this agreement. Council felt the need and so it's been a little different to manage this contract. Um, because a lot of the direction is coming from council, but then that's causing, you know, some issues as far as with oversight and do we really know, you know, what he's doing if someone were to, you know, there should be some oversight, there should be, it should be that he's basically reporting to the village manager, so um-
Yeah, oh yeah, I wanted to just make sure that it's clear that, uh and Maria touched on it, but under your char- or Maria covered it, but I wanted also to make sure, under your charter, the council employs two people, manager and the attorney. Everyone else is either an employee of the village or a vendor uh of the village and that falls under the village manager's umbrella. Um, so ev- everyone would be uh Intention Media included, would be uh directed or governed by the village manager, not by the village council uh as, in accordance with your charter. Um, so it it will be either the manager or if who, he or she designates somebody within staff, but again, that all still comes through the manager. Any communications um related to uh videos or whatnot with individual council members really needs, it it needs to go through the manager's office. The communications from uh any vendor would go through the manager's office, communications with any council member uh related to if they wanna have a video for something or if they think it's a good idea to uh record, you know, we had the dance recital out here last night to record that, would needs to go through the manager's office, not directly with uh with any vendor. Um, I know it's coming up now, but this this applies to any vendor, not just any one specific one.
Do we need to extend, Marnie, again for ten minutes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, okay, John, alright, do- okay, counsel, we have any questions?
We have public comment?
We'll do public comment in a minute, I'm just gonna give Carlos a chance to- you wanna do your thing, uh Carlos G?
Sure, uh I'll just have uh five or six slides, very simple. Um, to try to summarize what Maria said. So the structure that I have in the village is as a contractor and I do very specific three different jobs. It's video production, content management, that's all the accounts, the managing, will be the social media manager, and then surveys. All costs related to that program are incurred by me, Attention Media, as a contractor. So the way I manage the program over the years, when we started, uh staff wanted to uh for me to report to staff and we had different managers and temporary managers and we've attempted that and it really, it comes down to the point that, to the fact that most of these videos that are produced, they're weekends, you know, I'm I'm on call twenty-four-seven, so most of the work I do really happens on the weekends and the mornings and there's time sensitive for you to produce and we came to a point in the very beginning that we really, when I was sending an email saying, hey, this is ready, people were not responding because people are busy, they're doing their thing and it's really wasn't working. So after a while and we didn't have a manager, then Greg Warva came in, um we set up a monthly meeting. And so Greg would review the videos and again, he would delay the videos. You know that that commercial where everybody's online paying with Visa and then somebody comes with cash? That's what would happen. It would stop everything else. So this started as outreach, it was the need because there was a problem with trust in the community. That was the sole reason why this pro- uh program started. So we created trust and to have participation in the community, which is what I proposed, what I wanted you guys, the vision was let's have people to participate. You can get that, we get them to trust without them getting them to trust and you can get trust without being transparent. And we can get transparency without reaching and it's not up to the community to figure out and reach us, it's up to us. So it didn't exist. So I'm not gonna go into the stats because I know I talked about, a lot about this. The program was successful, you guys understand that, you know I have the background to do it, everybody knows that. But very quickly, on a monthly basis, it's several thousand views per video. The average video that I produce is seven hundred views. Just to put in comparison, anything else that the village posts, because I don't control the Facebook uh account by myself, uh has on average ten views. So it would, it takes um a hundred posts from the village of these daily posts that it's posted on these accounts to get the exact same amount of participation, views than one video. So the way we produce the product, the way I release this product is effective in a way um that people like to watch it, right? And there's two key ingredients to the success of this product, right? It's independence and community focus. And and I know when I talk about community focus, some people say, well, you know, you should really, one of the temp managers that we had, I had a meeting with the temp manager and he said our social media should be less sensational, it should be boring, it should be a known event. And usually when people come back with questions to me like that, I say, okay, show me the data. And there was no data to back up, there's not a reason why we should be less sensational or boring, if you will. So as an independent contractor and as an independent uh uh service provider to the village, what I focus is I take feedback from the manager and from council. It's not really a solely council-driven product and I adjust when necessary, right? The product is produced and released twenty-four-seven, there's really, you can't really pinpoint and say, I want a video by tomorrow at twelve o'clock. It depends on the event. Some events are super time-sensitive, some are not, right? And then it's uh, the service is reliable, trusted by the community and self-motivated, right? It's it's a, it takes a self-motivated individual to perform a self-motivated service to produce a result. When I look at this, people of- often have confused, how many videos are you doing? What's the length of the videos? Who do you film? Why do you film? None of this matters. I don't look at it that way at all. To me is, are more people watching the village accounts or not? And then I adjust every single time I do it based on that feedback. If people are not watching, why are you gonna be doing the same thing? And this does happen a lot. So I'm always adjusting and the guiding principle is this, increase residence, increase residents' attentions on the village. So everything I do is based on that. One thing that I wanna put to rest that every once in a while comes up is who do I film, why do I film? And there's a notion that somehow I do a lot of videos for um Mayor Pender and it's completely, you know, he's abusing the system. This came up two years ago during the election and and, you know, this is public, it's right there. You go on the websites on YouTube and you go through the videos. So I did again the exercise of going to the videos and show on the last year, this December twenty-twenty-two to now, which is early December twenty-twenty-three, that's the number of videos we have, okay? So the majority of our videos are really Founder's Park, community events and other videos and and village related videos and in the community videos. Now, you can argue that Mayor Pender has fourteen videos out of the eighty-four videos, which is sixteen point six percent. However, if you take the community events, which he goes to almost all of them, really Mayor Pender had six videos and those include Flora La Cita City's and Updates with the Aqueduct. So when somebody comes to me, make an argument that I am paparazzi Mayor Pender, it's not a correct argument. Here's the data and it shows who has videos and when they were done. It's a community-focused problem, alright? So again, he came two years ago and I wanted to make sure, point that out because it was, told me, it was uh, somebody told me that this was one of the issues. So the program has run exactly this way. I've attempted to connect with managers, to get feedback, to try to do videos with uh staff. I've, I've offered multiple times, no one came back to me and asking and I've done, I've done videos with Peter Freza. When there's something going on in the community, Terry texts me, hey, there's something going on, come see it. Um, our last manager, Ted Yates, wanted to have reporting. Every month, I think almost every single month, I send a detailed report of what videos when, when they were produced and the views. I never got one response back, number one, okay? And then I've asked, do you have any staff that I can film? Yeah, yeah, let's work on that because I was told that this would be necessary. Can we do some staff videos? So I would go and ask, can I have some staff videos? It was never brought to me. So the notion that somehow I choose to do videos for community and not for the staff is just not accurate. And it's been told multiple times and I just like keep repeating like, no, I've asked and it wasn't there. So the program naturally morphed to community videos, which is the majority of the videos, right? So today I take feedback from council, I have attempted to get feedback from manager and I take feedback from the community. And community feedback is this, if they were watching this, they're telling you, I like this. If you get something and you have two views, they're telling you, we don't care. So people need to adjust. Again, ideally would have, we'd have a PIO that is well-versed in communications. So far, everyone that came to oversee my project did not have the background to understand how this works and it always falls back to me. But I have the guiding principle of making the project work and that's how I operate. So in front of you, you have the contract and the two options are we design the contract that reflects exactly what we have been doing and it does not say that I report to council. I worked with John very carefully in this because we knew the, that the charter says you do not, you can't report to council. And it specifically says, you get feedback from council, from manager, from community and you make that decision. So before you, the decision is you either uh can approve the contract that we've designed that does not say a report to council. Um, another option that was given to me is that we just extend it for five, six months until a new, a new manager comes in. Um, I think that's not a good idea because it's a political year and the last thing we wanna be doing is negotiating a media contract in a political year, I think would be harder. Um, uh, so that's it. Um, we either approve the contract that we have or we can make a change that adding a reporting to the manager, which is already happening anyway. Uh, but the one thing I want, make sure that I alert you to retain is that right now I have the ability to look at the project and decide what goes in there. The minute you take that away from me and you put it on a manager or a staff member, that you lose that, the control completely. So now it's up to a manager to say, you need to do this, not having the background to know what happens. So I've been through this, we've experienced this in the last three years and the way I manage the program has, the program has proven to be successful over the last three years. A change just for the semantics, um I I'm not sure how it accomplishes much, but I respect your opinion and however you want to proceed and I'm here to answer questions.
Counsel, does anybody have any questions for Carlos? No, okay, okay, thanks Carlos, okay. Uh, Marnie, we need to extend another five minutes, please, if we're alright and let's uh move, okay, any, any public comment for this, Marnie?
Yes, uh Van Kadenhead, who has apparently left.
Sue, come on, come on.
Ms. Miller, Lauren Matticombi. I think that um we have consistently tried to tell you that communication is extremely important and I think that Carlos does a terrific job in communicating. Um, I'd love to see his videos, I'd love to see what's going on at at Founder's Park and um you can always count on him to um keep us informed of what we've missed and and what we should make time to see and I think it's really important to can, to let him, he's made a, a lot of appropriate decisions on, on what to video. He shows up at odd hours of the day and night and on weekends and I think it's terrific and I think that you should just let him continue doing what he's been doing because he's done a great job, thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Counsel, any discussion? Mark, Henry, Elizabeth, who wants to go? Anybody, any discussion?
Is that what it took to make, bring trust in staff? Did that?
Elizabeth, you wanna say something? Because I will, this, this has nothing to do with Carlos's ability to do a great job. To me, I did not know and I will plead guilty that we shouldn't be the boss of anybody and that's how this has been portrayed to me. Um, it's not my job to manage the staff, it's their job. And I think Carlos does a great job, he's done wonderful things for me, but at the same time it, it's not fair for us to have one person that is protected by council and and not be involved with the staff. I realize that over the last couple of days and I love Carlos to death, but I don't wanna be anybody's boss besides those two and that's it.
John just said it in the-
And then I'm told we're not allowed to be somebody's boss, so where do we go? Where do we go?
Can I clarify one thing? Just wanna make sure, clarify.
Can we just-
Hold on one second.
Just stay by there.
Stay there, Carlos. Mark, do you wanna say something?
I'm just gonna say, it's against the law for us to be his boss.
Well, then why are we? Well-
Can I also, yeah, so I I think this conversation is a natural byproduct of um of doing something pretty amazing. I mean, this, whatever council, I guess it wasn't us, the last council decided we want to embrace modern technology and use social media to its fullest extents, which is awesome and we hired an amazing person and he does a great job. No one is disputing that. And it, I mean, because this is a new program, it makes sense that we're sitting here having this conversation to outline exactly what we need to do with this entrepreneur. Um, and and so I don't know whether we need to give John better direction, but you know, I would like to see this contract very clearly state that, that Carlos deals with the manager or that designated staff person and we can give direction, that you still do vibrant and exciting and new. I, I mean, you're an entrepreneur, the fact, I don't wanna see that your, your, your pay goes up according to a COLA, that's ridiculous. I mean, we're all, everyone here has been an entrepreneur and you charge more for your services because you're doing an amazing job and you have the ability to charge more. I mean, that, it, you're not a staff member, you are an independent contractor. I, I'm sorry to speak directly to you, you could be whoever you are. There's no question that it's exciting and great, but, but but this has to go through the sta- through staff and it, and that contract, even though it was written in a nice vague way so that, yeah, we get it, I think needs to be very clear. So that, so that, again, we set up this new, new manager, so this is not a lightning rod, we're all clear on exactly what is happening in this program.
Can I make one comment?
No, 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 not yet, no. We, we gotta hear from the rest of people, sorry.
I'm just confused, I thought you were willing to work through the manager's office rather than directly through the council.
Yeah, that's the comment I was gonna make. So I am not disputing that I shouldn't go through the manager.
Right.
Because that is, the contract that John and I wrote does not state that I work for council. It was on purpose. And I clarified that with John. John, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this one, right? We, we're not, and that contract doesn't specifically say we're very mindful of this. Now, if you guys want to add a line there that says Carlos directly reports to manager, I have zero problem with that. Zero problem whatsoever. What I do, however, want you to consider is that because I am so knowledgeable of the program and know what works and doesn't work, I would like you to do, for example, I had a conver- a very quick conversation with Elizabeth, I just wanna make sure, mention because it makes sense. And Elizabeth was, was asking me, why don't we put in a contract that you have to do videos with staff? And my comment back was, if we force it, it's gonna make it worse. I would absolutely work with the manager to make sure that happens. I have begged for that to happen. So it's not that I don't wanna report to the manager, I just want you guys to consider, to just make sure I have the autonomy on the decision. Maria told me this morning that I can have- Maria told me this morning that I can have autonomy on ideas, not on decision what goes in there. But, very nicely, Maria, no, Maria does not have the background in communication. She's a great finance person. We don't have a PIO. You know, I work for the sheriff, and I work different for the sheriff, because we have a PIO that has bachelor's degree in English, PhD in communications. He knows what he's doing, and we connect together. We don't have this at the village. I am your expert in the subject matter, so...
Carlos, you're the expert in social media, but the manager has to give direction about what you're gonna go and do, and, and this...
I'm not asking for that not to happen. I'm just asking for me to retain some decision, because the manager can say, "Go do all these videos tomorrow," and then these accounts, right? There's something called moral hazard. These accounts start not working as well as they do, and then whose fault is it? Is it still mine?
Can I just respond to that?
Go ahead, go ahead.
This could go on all night.
Yes.
And it can't, right? You know...
Five minutes more, Marnie, please.
It's not an unreasonable request, so...
You're trying to cramp your style. You could, this is not a personal conversation. This is about any vendor who is employed is gonna take direction from staff to some level. It doesn't mean that...
That's the key word, "to some level." I agree right there. I agree 100%.
I, I mean, I want to just suggest...
I, I agree with you, "to some level." I agree. I have no problem.
I have an example. You'll recall, buddy, I went to the chamber lunch. You asked me to go and speak about TRIM. It was before, you know, during the budget process. So, I did speak, and Carlos was there. I didn't know he was gonna be there. He was there, and he filmed the whole chamber luncheon. And, you know, there's, you see the people that are there and the members of the chamber and things like that. That would have been an opportunity, though, had I known to be able to say, "Hey, Carlos, I'm gonna be giving some information on TRIM." Yeah, that's what Brian Cook was talking about when he said, "It's not, you know, government stuff. It's not necessarily interesting." But that would have been something, we could have done that video and then posted it. And that's truthfully more when we thought of, knew this was gonna happen and this program was gonna start. From a staff perspective, that's the kind of things we, we thought would happen.
And that, you were excellent. You and Hattie spoke that day, and you guys, that was what we needed. I mean, Judy's sitting right there.
The manager would need to be involved in that and just say, "Hey, Carlos, are you gonna be there? If so, so-and-so's gonna speak."
That's the issue. By the same token, the manager did not make an effort to make sure I was, I was there. That's all I'm saying. I don't want to prolong it. I, I don't want to prolong it. All I'm saying is, I'm there. I've asked to be there. I've asked to do these more boring videos. I have asked. So, we can't just say that I arbitrarily chose not to.
We gave you a list initially, and a lot of those weren't done.
Oh, Maria, please.
So, stop.
Want me to pull a list? I can pull a different list and tell you a different list.
Okay, everybody stop this.
I mean, my list is bigger than your list.
Carlos, come on. All right. Hey. All right. So, John. Okay. John, what, or ask counsel right here, what are we gonna do? This was about, John, you read what the thing is for a year. What are we gonna do? I heard people say something about, you know, for a new manager to come. What, are we gonna renew this with, with that statement, what you said, Elizabeth?
Because they, they can't work together. Look at that. That doesn't work.
Well, first of all, what is, what does the new council have to do with you doing your job? I'm sort of confused on that. That shows right now that you depend on this council, and that's gotta stop. We're not allowed to do this, correct? Am I wrong?
Correct.
Okay, so, I mean...
Why are we even deciding anything?
I, I know, we shouldn't be deciding anything. I'm sorry.
Right. It's not our job. It's your job.
Okay, so, what are we gonna do? Go ahead, Henry.
When you're done chewing.
Carlos has a license. It's called poetic license. I've been around entertainers, directors, lighting, sound people for a long time. If he has to be approved to do his job, that's wrong. Believe me, it's wrong. He should have the opportunity to whatever he wants, when he wants. I'm gonna tell him not to accept that you have to report to anybody. Even though you said you will do it, I'm telling you personally, it'll interrupt what you create. He's putting on a show every time he picks up his camera. He's the writer. He videos it. He's got the lighting. He's got the sound. He's got everything that Broadway has.
This isn't Broadway.
What's Broadway?
This isn't Broadway. I don't, I don't know what sense this is making, because somebody has to be in charge of everybody, and that's, that's it. Yes, well, I don't agree with you.
I guarantee you, if we're gonna allow something different.
Guys, I'm just making sure, I'll say one more time. I am not asking for me to break the charter and work for council. I am not asking for that. And I am perfectly okay...
But that's what you've been doing, and so, we're asking you not to deal with us to deal with them.
I am completely fine with that either. I, you know, I'm, I'm fine with that either, and I understand what Harry is saying, but I'm fine with that. All I'm asking you, if you can, is to just give me some autonomy. I will not say no to the manager.
Then we need to reconsider your contract, because that's not what in that, it's in that contract now.
I, I just would like to say one thing. The legal status of Carlos's position in this contract is extremely important. He is an independent contractor, and, and that word "independent" means a lot. We give him a task. Please produce a video of Maria speaking about TRIM at the chamber thing. How he does that, his artistic, poetic license, is, the discretion of how he produces that and delivers that to us is totally his. The more that we control that or try to affect that, the more it starts bleeding over and starts to look like he's an employee. And what comes with that is benefits and all the other things.
Where does the COLA come from? The 7%?
That's just something that we put in there. That doesn't mean...
Well, that makes him an employee.
Well, not necessarily. Not necessarily. That's just a standard by which his compensation can be erased. But if we make him an employee, then he is an employee, and that's not what he wants. I don't believe that's what we want. So, he has agreed that he's going to be reporting to the manager, and he will take direction from the manager. But the work product that he delivers to us, how he deliver, we tell him what we want, and then he figures out how to do that. If we deal with the how, we get in trouble, and he's gonna, the IRS is gonna call him an employee.
Mark, we're not, we're not telling him how. We're not. We're not saying, "Do it in this format, do it in these colors." And, and I appreciate your making that distinction. It's the manager's job to create a contract that works for her, because she is in charge of him. And, and this has become a weird lightning rod. And, and with an independent contractor, like any vendor, like Markham, do your wastewater. Are they telling him how to do it? No. They, they came to us to say, "This is the format, but I get it. You want me to look at your, these highlights."
Mark Page, man, is a vendor. Mark, he's a vendor, right?
Yeah. But, but it's, it's, the contract is not ours to actually even get involved with. It's the manager's. Make it however you want. We're not in charge of it.
Okay.
I mean, is that fair to say?
All right, so, what...
It's not, it's not, we're not, it's not up to us to approve this contract.
Well, you do have to approve the contract, because it's an expenditure over $25,000. So, that...
Well, then, write it how you want to write it, because, to make it work for your office.
When is Carlos's current contract up right now, John?
I'd have to look to see when it was extended to...
It's being up on the first of the month.
Do we need to take him out a month and solve it, or, or two months or something, and...
Yeah, I mean, what you could do is, assuming he's agreeable, obviously, he's, he'd be a party to it, is extend it for another month or two, and then we could come back with, you know, revised agreement, if that's what you all are looking for, or, you know, whatever timeframe. I mean, you, you could do that if that's something you're looking for.
Are you okay with that?
Sure. But, but actually, it's, it, it, what? I mean, what, what concerns me here is that this is not, this clearly isn't working. Like, there's, there's just this adversarial relationship that, that isn't working, and, and you can own some of that in a, in, I mean, it's just simply not working. And, and shame on us if we're putting Marie, the manager, in a position, and this is already a polarizing position for the manager to just do managerial things, and now we're adding this, this friction. It's just not fair.
I, I understand. We, none of us, I include...
And you know what? You could change that. And I say that, because you do good work, but, I mean, sorry.
Okay. Well, we gotta, we need to hurry up. Marnie, we need to probably extend another five minutes, and let's figure this out, what we're gonna do.
Why can't we simply make a simple amendment to the contract? John can help us with the language that says, in just plain, simple words, that the contractor will report to and take direction from the village manager on producing his work product?
All it needs to be is if, if Carlos has plans on what he's gonna video, letting the manager know. I'm gonna, I'm, you know, that, what, what he's planning to do. And then if staff has some ideas, we relay that back to him, you know? So, it's coming from both sides.
I'm 100% fine with that. 100% fine with that.
That's what you're saying.
Right.
Carlos, she's looking for...
I'm 100%...
Two-way street, okay? And if they have something they want expect for you to do, they request you to do that. They request you to, if I, if I, if I have, if one of us, counsel, wants a video, we gotta call the manager to get permission. Is that right? Is everybody, are we okay? Are we, we all on board with that?
And I would like to see that language in there. And when you want to raise, just ask for more money, because it costs more to do business. That's what everyone does who's in business by themselves. They, they ask for more money when they, they work a year. "Here's my results. See how great it is?" Ask for more money. It's crazy to put it to a COLA. That's crazy.
Can we get the scope of what his job definition is? Because I don't really know.
The scope is on the contract, as is right now.
Well, then, we need to see it.
It specifically describes what the scope is.
And are you okay if we want to modify that?
Being that it's this late at night, can we just, can we extend it? And then we bring this back like John just...
Wait, buddy. Can I say one thing? What Maria just said, I'm 100% in agreement with. I have no problem with you guys having to let, or the manager that's in here, "Hey, we want Carlos to do these videos." And then also, staff can say, "We want Carlos to do these videos." All I want is when there's that bucket of, if I can, that bucket of videos, say, "Okay, guys, let me do this one, and let me do that one." Right? Our goal is to get people to watch this. That's all I'm asking. It, it's really, I'm not trying to be adversarial. So, are you okay with that? Maria suggested, I'm okay with that. I have no problem reporting to...
When does, when does his contract expire right now?
They're already expired.
It did?
Yeah. So, what Mark suggested, just adding the language, and what Maria suggested, that language that Elizabeth wanted to see, I'm 100% okay with that. So, there's no need to...
Late hour right now. Let's just extend it and do this. Let's redo it with, with the language that you and her agree, and then we, we do, we, we bring it back and...
What if, what if we continue the matter until Thursday? Y'all get together, put the language in there, let us see that, and then we bring it back? Would that be satisfactory? We're all tired and a little punchy. I'm a little punchy.
Yes.
Can I ask, I mean, that's like, I appreciate, I mean, we're creating an emergency for these people over our own inability to, to figure this out. This, this is, I mean, we love Carlos, but I don't know. Do you have anything else going on tomorrow besides working on Carlos's contract? I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, can we just, and this is not personal, because we think you're awesome, but can we just extend the contract for a month and let them figure this out? Is that amenable to anybody? And in the meantime, and you know what?
Before I answer that, Maria, can we do what Mark suggested, or you prefer to do the way Elizabeth's suggesting? Whatever works for you.
I concur what Mark said.
I would like to wrap this up on Thursday. I don't want to keep delaying, because we're already two months out.